Good morning Commissioners, Public Hearing, it's April 9th. Chair Cowell.
Here.
Commissioner Lemon.
Here.
Commissioner Chaiten.
Here.
Commissioner Chen.
Here.
Commissioner DeBenscher. Commissioner Obel.
Here.
Commissioner Gusshausen.
Here.
Commissioner Walter Smith.
Here.
Commissioner Watson.
Thank you.
Commissioner Shemirak.
Here.
Commissioner Ross.
Alright, good morning Commissioners, we're gonna start today's Preservation Department Agenda of the Series in Public Meeting Item. First is item number one, this is LPC 19-31163, an application for certain appropriateness in a borough of Brooklyn. Block 37 lot 15, 206A Bergen Street, in the Warren Hill Historic District Extension. In Italian, so, rowhouse blocks are 1871 to 72. The application is to construct a rear yard addition. This was last presented at the public hearing of March 5th, 2019, and no action was taken at that time.
Good morning Commissioners, Amy living Preservation Staff. This application is located at 206A Bergen Street, between Nevin and Long Streets, in the Bowen Hill Historic District Extension. So, the proposal was first heard on March 5th of this year. The initial proposal was to construct a rooftop addition and a full height rear yard addition. The Commissioners at that hearing expressed concerns that the additions overwhelmed the scale of the building and the block. So, here you see the previous proposal for it. The proposal has been revised to omit the rooftop addition, lower the rear yard addition by one floor, and set back the basement and parlor floors four feet. Please note that due to the existing grade change at the rear yard, the cellar level of the rear of the building is six floors.
Can you put this down on the side?
Yes.
The dark blue are additions that are comparable in height?
Yes, so the dark blue are three-story additions, white blue are...
One-story.
Are one-story. And, so, you see, we have the one-story cellar and the setback addition on two floors. So, this is projecting sixteen feet in total. We have an addition here that's twenty. This one is a different building with a depth of the row sixteen feet, and then the sixteen-foot sort of deck extension, comparable addition. And there will be restoring work at the front of the side which will handle that stop problem. Previously proposed, and now proposed. And the addition will be clad in brick and stucco. The cellar floor will project sixteen feet into the rear yard, and the setback basement and parlor floors will extend twelve feet from the rear of the side. And the setback and the roof will have brass railings, which will serve as terrace space. The cellar floor also has a stucco wall extending from this there, which is most of this scene, and it is on slide seventeen. And the architect, if you can answer any questions.
Are there any questions for the architect? Any questions for Amy before we start the discussion?
Yeah, I'm just wondering what is the thinking behind the two large windows on the... Is that the parlor floor?
It is the parlor floor.
It seems like a little anomalous.
Cellar basement.
I mean, often, we, everybody knows, we approve the conservation of something in the city, like glassy, open, contemporary additions when they are moving into the rear yard a bit. But these seem like just anomalous rather than what they were understanding.
So, why don't we have a motion to open the proceeding, so the architect can answer their question? Motion? All in favor? And John, perhaps you can talk a little bit about the context as well, and how these may or may not fit into that.
And, I mean, leave the answer even further, not only how they relate to others, perhaps in the borough, or just generally in New York, but also how they relate to the windows indoors of the Argo in this ensemble.
John Hathaway, the Architect for the Project. And the general concept here was, though there aren't any specific T-Porters on this block, the notion was that the parlor floor needs an extension, which is generally more open. And, so, the parlor floor with the larger windows sort of represents that idea of having that essentially more open, lighter than the basement below. And then the cellar, which extends further, is really essentially like a plate in this sort of more unusual situation, where the grade is one-story lower than typically found. So, it's context on the block. There are other one-story reflections going to the east, in the new far on the door, right corner. On the west, there are two, there's another two-story extension, bigger down the block. And it's a, I'm gonna go back to the, oh no, excuse me. Remember where the photographs are? I didn't want to forget yours. Okay. The, this two-story extension over here is nondescript. So, there wasn't anything in particular that we're feeding off of, other than the fact that our neighboring neighbor here is very open at the parlor floor also. Not that this is a historical structure in any way, but I felt that it was a reasonable approach to maintain that same sort of larger opening and openness at the parlor floor.
Any other questions? So, I think we'll start our discussion. So, when we saw this the last time, it was both rooftop and full height rear yard addition, and we all agreed that it was out of scale within the context of this block. And have eliminated the rooftop addition, lowered the rear addition, set it back so that the archers don't project as deeply as the cellar level. So, the first question is about the size of addition, if that would be in the context. And then the design question that you raised, and I think that even with T-Porters, you know, with the very glassy rear facades that we approved, there are usually mullions to give it a certain scale that relates to typology a little bit. So, that's something you may want to think about.
Yeah, let me just respond, I was fine and fond applaud the changes in mass, I think that brings it now into...
Okay. I find out for the record, we also have a letter from the neighbors who opposed it.
Well, I can support the mass, as I said, I think it brings it into reasonable context with the neighbors, although it's still a little bit aggressive. But I can't support the, the way, the whole ensemble of the rear additions, I think it still needs to be reworked. It doesn't relate to itself, it doesn't relate to the neighbors. I don't think just adding some mullions solves the problem at all. That's just my thought.
My thoughts?
I feel the same way, but I guess I'm coming at it slightly differently. I think the mass is barely appropriate. It is a relatively underdeveloped block. The fact that there are a couple of outliers is not necessarily enough to hang one's hat on to create another one. However, I think that had the applicant taken the statement made about the T-Portage a bit further, and really used material, menstruation, articulation, detailing, to make the parlor floor volume distinct and articulated the way it's typical of rear additions, even if you kind of crack it on next door, I think that it would lighten it up and make it more appropriate. I think they could, we just had a job here where someone came back with a T-Portage addition, I remember it was a real nice operation. Where the second round was much more successful, and I think that they could look at that. And I think that, I mean, part of what's driving this weirdness is the plan. And it's because of the plan, on both the basement and parlor floor levels, you have a split right down the middle. And whereas on the first floor, that split is kind of sealed with the mullion in the center of the double doors, which you assume to be French doors. Upstairs, the, there's no attempt to conceal it. So, I think that, you know, I think it'd be okay to have a center-divided facade, although a little bit unusual. But I think you gotta really pick how you're gonna handle that. You have to really pick it as either being, you know, we're gonna conceal it, maybe it was centered composition, it's three bays of some kind, like in how it's built. Or you gotta, you know, pile in and try to make it two bayed in order. But I think if any try to have it both ways, gives you the impression that Fred had, not Cher, which is the first eye.
Okay, so, I mean, I think that, I know that we have approved other sort of two-bay, sort of square proportion windows on your facades because of our practice of being more flexible. So, I'm just trying to think about why in this case we want to send it back for redesign. Maybe it's because the amassing is still sort of pushing the outer limits, and because of the size, maybe the design does need to be articulated in a way that helps reduce the scale. Is that what everybody agrees?
Yeah, and the proportions of the windows don't work with the other windows. I mean, maybe it would have worked, but they're just not as vertical, even though they're vertical.
I don't wanna pile on, I'm just explaining a little bit more of my thoughts here. I think we have a responsibility as architects, those of us who are, to be sure that, and those of us who aren't, sort of are articulated of. We have a responsibility, not just to say, "Well, it's glassy, it's very glassy, and it's in the back, and it's easy to see," so it's okay. I don't think that's our responsibility, I don't think our responsibility stops there. We also have a responsibility to sort of get it right. And I don't think this is getting it right, it's just not articulated, and a confused idea. It's just throwing the does what the plan says to draw the middle, and looking at the elevation and saying, "Well, that's it." And I don't think it's that simple. I think we have a responsibility to work with applicants to get it right, and sort of come back to it, but I think that's what we're gonna do.
To get, sort of have a better scale and articulation that relates to the context.
If the commissioners are comfortable with it, this seems like the type of project where staff can work with the applicant, either introduce a three-bay configuration like the historic pattern, or perhaps be more referential to the T-Portage, or even the basic ability of working on your situation.
Yes.
Again, speaking for myself, I don't wanna see it again. I mean, I think you should work with them, they need you to work with them. I think we can't just say, "Work with them," you know, "It's gonna change a lot." I think we need to see it.
Yes, I understand, and also the, and please make the, you know, do more with the T-Portage idea for the whole work floor, perhaps as part of the change.
Alright, so I'm hearing a little mixed opinion about whether it should come out, or whether there's a snub direction for staff. How do I feel, do they feel? Staff, staff, staff. Staff, three, four, five?
No staff. With witness back.
I think the staff outnumberers. I think there was clear direction here.
A lot of pressure on staff.
Alright, so, do you want to not have to make this motion?
Thank you, I have nothing else.
Okay.
Okay, in the matter of 206A Bergen Street, the Warren Hill Historic District Extension, this is an application to construct a rear yard addition. I note that the cellar floor at the rear facade of this building is above grade. I recommend approval with modifications, finding that the work will not damage or destroy any significant architectural features, that the proposed addition will not rise to the full height of the building, thereby helping to maintain a sense of the building's original mass. That the proposed addition, featuring an extended cellar floor, and setback basement, and parlor floors, while slightly deeper than the majority of the additions on the block, will not diminish the presence of a rear yard or a cohesive re-space at the center of the block. That proposed brick and stucco facade punched openings will be typical of secondary facades of buildings within the historic district, within this historic district, in keeping with the residential character of the building and the road. That the rear yard addition will only be minimally visible from public to outdoors, if at all, from oblique angles in the context of parlor buildings and adjacent secondary facades, and that the work will not diminish the special architectural character of the building in the historic district. I also note, will also note that the, the windows at the parlor floor of the addition will be restudied in consultation with the staff.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any votes? Okay, is everyone else in favor?
Yes.
Okay, so the motion passes with that modification.
Alright, moving on, item number two, LPC 19-36173, an application for certain appropriateness in a borough of Brooklyn. Block 1075 lot 62, 535 First Street, in the Park Slope Historic District. British Regency-style rowhouse designed by Fred W. Eisenrod, built in 1915. The application is to construct a rooftop addition. This was last presented at the public meeting of March 5th, 2019, and no action was taken at that time.
Good morning Commissioners, the K-Cap Preservation Staff. This is 535 First Street, located on the north side of First Street, between the Eighth Avenue and Crosswalk Street, Park West, in the Park Slope Historic District. This proposal was initially presented at the public hearing of September 18th, 2018. At that time, the proposal was to sell planters at the First Street area line, construct a rooftop addition, which would be visible from a public thoroughfare, extension knees, which would be visible from the east and west of First Street, construct an additional partial floor on top of these existing rear house, which would also now be visible from a public thoroughfare, modify basic break openings at the L and X to be at the rear yard. At the public hearing, the Commissioners approved all of the proposed work except with regard to the rooftop addition and chimney extensions. The Commissioners had expressed concerns regarding the size of the rooftop addition and the visibility of the chimney extensions, and took no action on that component of the work. The proposal was presented a second time at the public meeting of March 5th, 2019, to address the Commissioners' comments. At that time, the applicant proposed reducing the scale of the rooftop addition by setting it back further from the front facade, and lowering the height of the addition further, which would eliminate the need for the culture knee extensions at the southern end of the roof, and therefore, the addition and its chimneys would not be visible from a public thoroughfare. On that occasion, there were several Commissioners who supported the proposal. However, a few Commissioners were still concerned about the construction of a rooftop addition, because no other additions exist within the block, and the Commission again took no action. The applicants have gathered additional research regarding rooftop additions in this historic district, and are here today to present that additional information to you. Please note that the design of the overall proposal has not changed from what was presented on March 5th. The applicant will now present that additional information.
Can we have a motion to open the proceeding? All in favor?
Aye.
Just state your name for the winner.
Good morning, my name is Sean Watts, I'm a principal at VR Street Studio Architecture. As I've mentioned, we're gonna present our revised applications to 535 First Street. Did do a couple of small modifications to jump in now. Our, during the last presentation, it was interesting the Commissioners discussed about how townhouses needed to evolve through reprogramming such as rooftop additions, and while remaining culturally historically instead of appropriate, which we agree with. Our aim is to demonstrate how our rooftop additions are appropriate for the Park Slope Historic District additions. For context, I did a little bit of research. This is, this is something I've learned. So, if you look at earlier approvals in the Park Slope Historic District, in the last nine years, obviously, there's been six similar additions, several of which are on equally consistent rows of houses. You can see all six of these additions here in this area line, which is about, calculated roughly about fifteen percent of the overall district. As recently as five months ago, November 2018, LPC approved a very similar addition on a similarly uniformed row of houses directly across the street at 536 First Street. So, you can just see the map here, the orange ones are, LPC approved additions, the first six of which were done after 2010. And then the rest is non-original, which is in the addition. The difference between the two blues, we tried to show more contiguous height. So, for example, this is, you know, all maybe two-storied, it's all forced races, really document changing height. The blue, black blue, the dark blue is document changing height, so you can sort of see the rhythm of height change. So, this is 530, this is our proposed addition, this is 536 First Street. This, the addition, when it was approved, going back and looking at the approval, it was not visible from First Street, as ours is not. It was partially visible from the rear, from Second Street, through the break. I'm gonna flash it a second. So, looking at, looking at the overall neighborhood, you feel the block has a piecing edge to character along both street fronts. First and Barkfield, and also on the other block. But on both, interestingly, on both First and Barkfield, just on the street, there are seven types of facade treatment on each street, with substantial variations within those treatments. And they, on both streets, step up pretty significantly towards the park. So, you get, even on the linear facades, the, you know, repetitive facade, you sort of get a little stucco, which is kind of interesting. So, this is repeating a little bit of the stuff you were saying, originally developing our rooftop, we tried to, this is our original presentation, our today's presentation. We tried to adhere to the rooftop addition and the application guidelines. And, so, the nature of the block addition wasn't visible from the street. We tried to make character, maintain the character of the rear by stepping it back from the rear yard, and making it a bit, stepping, and also maintaining the roll of fourth floor windows. So, let's see, and also, we didn't think that we were mentioning this significant historic fabric, and keep the thing low, below the tall. The original, our original scheme was problematic, because one of our chimneys, this chimney was just walking the street, so our structural changes were to move the addition back, so we don't have to elevate these front chimneys at all. We redesigned our fourth floor, so they allow a stair to come up on the side of the addition rather than in front of it, which allows a higher stair mass. And this scheme still maintained moving the, these two mechanical units are actually right here on the back direct line, which is right in the windows. And we lowered the design and the chimney a bit. And for today's presentation, we had, we moved the back chimney house, which would take the, the whole next step, which chimney could pass, people move. And we originally showed the plan here, and I lost the presentation, which is a simple thought. We also, this is actually, we also lowered our original skyline, especially the roof. So, we wanted to show you this in perspective, we updated our perspectives, our original perspectives didn't quite show any detail, so we've updated these to show the equipment and the various infrastructure on top of the, this is our roof here. This is before and after. You see, we're gonna move these guys over here, and close them. And the addition is simplified as we showed before, this is from the other side. So, outside of that, it's impressive, we feel the Commissioners can support this project, because it creates a rooftop space that respects and enhances the aesthetic and integrity of this particular block, and anyway, the program type of rooftop addition allows for it in an appropriate way. On the inner block, the north and south sides, there's a typical level, typical level of piece-in-piece variation, you can see here, and, and here, looking both sides, which contributes to an overall pleasing atmosphere of mixed character. And we did a view from the eastern neighbor's yard at high level looking out, before the competition. So, we feel like our addition is gonna, before, not after. We feel like our addition continues to step forward in the inner block, and to be, you know, make it partially visible above the point line, but we're getting rid of some, you know, the outside mechanics to create, make a pleasing composition in the inner block. In the last presentation, Commissioners pointed out that one advantage of the townhouse is the potential for rooftop access. We feel a townhouse is a good model for this access, because it's limited to a rural roadside, et cetera. And but the practical use of the rooftop, having a space you can use year-round is great. Having a space that you can actually look out, and, you know, maintain your roof and see what's going on up there, as opposed to a bulkhead in this case, which, you know, would be rarely used. So, in summary, we feel like the proposal follows the well-established model for a useful and flexible rooftop space. It reinforces the existing aesthetic quality by being invisible from a public thoroughfare, and enhancing the proportion scandal spirit and the stair character of the block.
Now that we're looking at this view, can you explain what that overhang is exactly in terms of its material and dimensions?
What's overhang? Do you guys have the dimensions? It's six down, five feet from the rear.
And how thick is it, how tall is the base?
Eighteen inches. And it's padded brick metal, which is analogous with the, I'll do it again. We're gonna use the original actual materials of the brick metal that we, um, to us, to apply that.
Alright, are there any other questions?
Yeah, can we go back to page two? I kind of, I don't think I understood this. When you're talking about the differences in the light blue and the dark blue, what was the post, what were you trying to demonstrate there?
So, so, there was a question in our last presentation about the purity of the block, and how it's, and how much it impacts our addition. And so, we went and just looked at the overall view, and tried to figure out a way to represent the kind of degree of contiguous rooftops on a particular block. So, what we tried to show here, and it's partially successful, is just to show the change. So, on any given, if you look at any given block individually, the light blue is all over a level, and the dark blue is at a different level, it's a higher level. So, this is, in this case, it's, you know, four and five stories, sometimes three and four stories. But just to give you a sense, in the context of which additions were added to what, to what kind of block, you see, most of them, I think, were added to blocks that had a little bit more originality. Now, some of them, especially the more across the street, kind of represented our same situations, so we didn't feel like we were doing something that is in our, in our district.
Okay, so, so even though First and Second Street have the purest rooftops, your point was that we've already approved ruining a pure role on the same street.
That's not why I always offer a yes.
I just would like to confirm, there's no visibility on the front?
That's correct, you can't see this from any angle, from any farther.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Okay, so thank you, conceiv, we'll start our discussion. So, the last time that we saw this, the proposal had been revised, the shape and form and scale of the addition had been reduced and simplified. The chimneys were now all very visible, and we had a discussion about the appropriateness. We had three Commissioners absent that. we had a discussion about the appropriateness, we had three commissioners absent that day, and so we had a discussion that did not result in a vote, we can have enough votes either way, but we had four of us who were supportive of it, given the size and scale of the addition and the total lack of visibility, so that was, you know, Genie and Ken and Fred and I all supported it. Michael felt very strongly that it is pristine row regardless of visibility, that there should be an addition, and John, I think you agree with that statement, I'm sure. So, you know, Wellington and Diana and Anne, you were all absent, and I think you were there, but maybe you didn't comment on it, so you weren't there either, okay. So there were, there are really four of you, I think, and my position probably is a change in judging by your comments, I think, as it either. So I think we want to hear from particularly the four of you at this juncture. I still remain convinced that because it's completely invisible from a public way, and it's been reduced in footprint and height, and simplified in its massing, that it doesn't detract from the building, but I do note that that overhang is visible from the rear, so I would be comfortable with that being thinner or set back more, or refined in a way that didn't call as much attention to it. So have others?
I believe what you just said, that overhang can be certainly, thinner element doesn't need to be at eighteen inches or at all.
I agree, I think that they've so much reduced in size and not visible from the street, so I think that they could change the overhang to something like the cover that they had before.
Okay, great.
Yeah, I agree with your remarks, except and also with the version of my files.
I agree, except that I kind of like this, because they have a good render, I mean, if you look at sketch, you know, the shapes, I remember, I'm fine, it's, it's, but.
And Ken and Genie, are you still on the head? Okay, all right, so I think we have enough to do with approval with modifications, so, Genie, do you want to go ahead?
In the matter of document nineteen dash.
Oh, and sorry, excuse me, I do want to note, we have five emails which came in and were all available to you, three or four of them, before today, in opposition.
In the matter of document nineteen dash three six one seven three, Blackberry Park, Fourth Street, Park Slope Historic District, British Regency style row house designed by Fred W. Eisenman and built in 1915, the application is to construct a rooftop addition. It's always a great house, it's a little bit amusing. I know that the building's style, scale, materials and details are among the features that contribute to the special architectural and historic character of the Park Slope Historic District. I recommend approval with some modifications, finding that the proposed work will not alter, damage or destroy any significant architectural features, that the proposed rooftop addition will not be visible to many public thoroughfares, that the proposed rooftop addition will be set back, remodel front, demurred facades, thereby helping to maintain the sense of the building's original massing, that the stucco metal material palette of a rooftop addition is in keeping with the treating of rooftop additions and other accretions found throughout the historic district, and that the cumulative effect of the proposed rooftop addition and previously approved rear yard additions will not overwhelm the building for the historic district, however, I recommend that the overhang at the rear of the addition be made lighter or eliminated, and that the application be brought to a good status.
Okay, call up favor? Any opposed? Okay, so the motion passes, thank you.
Moving to public meeting item number three, this is LPC 19 dash 22595, an application for certificate appropriateness in Borough of Manhattan, block 583 lot 17, 54 Morton Street in Greenwich Village Historic District, a house built in 1852, 53 with litter alterations. The application is to remove paint, replace windows, construct rooftop bulkhead, raise chimneys, install railings and reconstruct the rear facade and addition.
Good morning, commissioners, I am fellow preservation staff, this application is for orders in 24 Morton Street, which is located on the south side of Thompson Street, between Hudson and Bedford Streets, in the Greenwich Village Historic District. So I'm going to take you through the entire presentation, and if you have questions, the applicants are here to answer them for you, okay? So the proposal, as a reminder, was heard on November 20th of last year, at that time, the proposal was to replace the areaway fence, replace the windows, add the front facade with metal windows, remove paint from the front facade, we can start the rear facade in addition with a glass plating and large openings, and to remove the skylight in the room, to start the bulkhead with smaller railings. So the commissioners present at that time expressed a consensus of support for the replacement of the areaway railing, and were generally supportive of the replacement of wood windows or metal windows. Most commissioners were also generally supportive of removing the white paint throughout the front facade, but expressed concerns about revealing the mismatched brickwork, and requested that the applicant re-study removal of the paints and at the front facade, so the applicants have addressed this concern, like opposing to remove the paint at the base of the building to reveal the brownstone finish, and to repaint the upper levels with a red brown color to match the underlying brick. I'm going to jump ahead to the rear facade here. So at the time, commissioners were generally supportive of reconstructing this rear extension, but some had concerns about reconstructing the top floor, and most commissioners were really concerned about the glass plating that was proposed throughout, and there were suggestions of maybe incorporating some base paint. So as a response, the applicants have addressed this by eliminating the proposed glass plating, proposing a large opening at the base with a metal span open hell, punched openings, and retaining the rear facade as is, and only putting some windows. So now I'm going to jump to the roof work. So after roof, the commissioners were divided with regard to the removal of the skylight, which is located in fact here, and all of the commissioners were really concerned about the visibility of the work of the roof, so the applicants have reviewed several options to try to retain the skylight and construct a bulkhead, which you can review on the very last page of your packets, and they are now currently still proposing to remove the skylight, and the proposal includes reconstruction of two bulkheads instead of one larger bulkhead, as you can see here, and they are proposing to set both bulkheads back further from the front facade. Here's a reminder of what they had previously proposed, and here is split up, sort of, and so they were able to slip the roof and remove the roof railings that is required, which is a reduction of about two feet in many places. So I'm going to take you through the visibility, and I'm going to kind of go backwards, so there were, as you can recall, this is the visibility, this is the U-shad of the work of the roof here, so this is the E right here, and you can see they have sort of outlined what was previously visible at this portion, and it's really hard to see because of the foliage, so I'm going to move on. Here, you're right across from the building, and at that time, we were able to see sort of the poppy of a chimney, and now they've eliminated visibility and everything from this viewpoint. They have also eliminated the visibility of the work of the roof from this viewpoint, where you can kind of see the bulkhead here. Here, at this juncture, we can still see, we still have some visibility of the bulkhead, but not as much, you can kind of see it better here in the zoomed-in photo. And then finally here, what we see mostly is the proposed railing, whereas previously we were able to see railing and bulkhead in this location. So, do you have any questions? The applicants are here.
Are there any questions, or the applicants are ready? Okay, all right, thank you, Abby, for a very thorough presentation. So I think that there are a few different components, there's the rear facade, the rooftop, and front railing windows, so, and paint, of course. So why don't we, as you think about your comments, sort of start with the front, move to the rear, and then to the roof, just as Abby did in her presentation, so anyone want to start? Okay, well, so I think that the last time commissioners were comfortable with the taking away of the light colored paint and returning it to a brick and brownstone palette, and so, but they were concerned about the mismatched brick that they might find in the paint, so they're proposing a red brick colored paint on the facade to deal with the mismatched brick, but would resurface the brownstone, the brighters, et cetera. And so I think that seems consistent with what the commissioners were supportive of last time in terms of the color palette, and similarly, I think the railing, everybody was comfortable with. So moving to the rear, I think that it was really a design issue for the commission, not much of a size and scale issue because of the context, so we have what we see very often, sort of double eight at the basement and carlo floor, three of the four blocks stand still, and the rest fully has overhang, considering, after all, this is a reason for everyone. Okay, great, so, and then moving to the roof, I think that there is a very specific corridor because of the way that Morton Street angles, but it seems at this point that we're really only going, that this is catching a bit of the bulkhead and beyond, that's really just the railing, and those seem to be kind of consistent, huge, copy to the period features, so I think that that also addresses the comments. Yes, Abby?
Yeah, I agree with you, and I also think that, well, the fact that they're not giving anything to the top floor is lit, and I think the solution to the very issue is much more compatible, much more integrated with the architecture. And I think that the, it's a very interesting creative solution to the rooftop, actually, I'm doing the two pieces, it's low and neutral, but I think that it's actually a very successful one, and it's an interesting thing that we've seen before.
Yeah, it's sort of a little contemporary paint on the slope bulkhead, or.
And the, I mean. I would say there, the behalf of the changing of the rear facade is, you know, significant on hectare level, and it fits in, and it's more elegant, and thank you for thinking about that, and making those decisions.
Great, so I, yes, Michael?
I know the artists in the artist's spotlight is configuration, as we talked about last time, is something worth saving, and I think, looking at the last page where the ghost for options, it seems like there is an option to move it, but if I'm mistaken, a little bit of last time, this was not an original or the old one.
Abby, can you use one for that?
That's the case for saying, like, yeah, that's just, I want to understand a little bit.
So, do you want to know about the.
Artists.
Do you want to see it?
No, I just want to know what your minds were on when it was put in, and if it was actually the seventh, because I remember there was something about it last time.
I mean, it's a, you know, it's an artist studio skylight, right, so we see this a lot in Greenwich Village, it's not this whole front of the street, so we can't tell you exactly when it came in, and the design report doesn't talk about it, so, I mean, but it isn't something that we wouldn't expect to discover when we're doing something like this in Greenwich Village, because, you know, along with the studio windows that are north-facing, we also have, we'll find the skylights as well, so they, this is their study of how to incorporate the skylight, move it, keep it, and they've come up with.
So do you have any information on the condition of it?
Um, they said the applicants believe that they will have to reconstruct the entire thing, and it's a pretty bad shape because it's steel, I'll take you back to page four, has a pretty good photo of it, and it's, I'm sorry for all of the time. For all of the delay. So, here we go, so this is it right here, and it is, I mean, you know, it's up there, and, I mean, the steel is not in great condition, it's, it probably would have to be reconstructed.
And I know we're fiercely protective of them when you can see them, and for smaller ones like this, I think we have approved the full replacement of that, even in the top of the building.
These are not the artist skylights that we typically have come to appreciate and protect, the capital of the board, but those are often in the fronts of buildings, and they've altered the top floor in a significant way, that we probably wouldn't allow today, but nonetheless, that's just a piece of irony, but the fact that they've been part of the history of this building, the way the history of this building is what, is kept, this is not bad at all.
Okay, all right, so, yes, okay, so I think we're all supportive, so you go ahead and make the motion.
In the matter of document nineteen dash 22595, 54 Morton Street in Greenwich Village Historic District, the application is to remove paint, replace windows, construct a rooftop bulkhead, raise chimneys, install railings, and reconstruct the rear facade in addition. I note that the building's style, scale, materials and details are among the features that contribute to the special architectural and historic character of Greenwich Village Historic District, I refer the note that the stoop was removed, balcony installed, studio window introduced, and facade painted as part of a significant labor alteration in the early part of the twentieth century, during a time when artists took their residency in Greenwich and that bigger bulk cabinets lived in the building in the nineteen thirties. I recommend approval, noting that the replacement of the nonhistoric simply designed areaway fence will not remove a significant feature of the site, the proposed areaway fence will alter certain design elements of existing historic metalwork at the carlo floor level that will harmonize with facade and streetscape, that proposed aluminum clad wood windows will match the historical business in terms of configuration, operation and finish, that the removal of the white paint throughout the facade will not eliminate significant change over time, that in painting the upper floors, a red brown color and dealing with historic brownstone base exposed will be keeping with historic color palette of the building, but the skylight we removed to simply design it is not visible from public thoroughfare, but the proposed rooftop bulkhead will be small in size, set back from the front facade, and will only be minimally visible when seen from public thoroughfares at distance at oblique angles. That the proposed rooftop bulkheads will feature wood siding and an angled skylight involving the presence of historic skylight will be keeping with utilitarian rooftop accretion style throughout the historic district, that the rear facade has been altered and is not part of a cohesive row and features plain brickwork and punched openings with no significant architectural features, therefore its reconstruction will not damage or remove any significant features, that the proposed rear yard addition will not be visible for many public thoroughfare, that the brick clad rear addition will feature punched openings and a metal span for between the large two-story opening at the base, helping to maintain the residential scale of the building, and that the large mesomere opening at the base will be at a discreet location and will be keeping with similar large openings at the rear of buildings on this block.
Call up favor? Any opposed? So that's approved, thank you.
I have number four, this is LPC 19 dash 34154, an application for certificate appropriateness in Borough of Manhattan, block 698, block 22, 550 West 27th Street, AKA 26011, that we're doing 550 West 26th Street, West Chelsea Historic District. And it's how we print some survival style office and factory building designed by Clint Russell, W 2112, and American Ravage style factory building, 12 H. Paul, 1901, and I do have, the application is to construct a new building in new competitions and a rooftop. Applications to construction, new building, and new competitions, and the last was in the 22nd, 2018, and I'm sure it's still available.
Good morning, Commissioners, and I present to you an application for work located in the West Chelsea Historic District, the complex of buildings and open site formerly known as the Otis Elevator Company. As presented at the topic hearing, the proposal is for a new building on the open site with connected rooftop locations on the two historic buildings located here and back here. There are also modifications and removals at secondary facades and ground floor alterations and window replacements at the primary facade. The Commissioners supported the much of the proposal, but some were primarily concerned about the size and integration of the cantilever portion of the new building and rooftop equipment. There were also concerns about the number of openings being modified at the base of the old building, and a few other details and finished comments that will be addressed. The applicants have returned with a revised proposal in response to the Commissioner's statements. Cass Tackler, the preservation consultant, will present the revisions to you.
Any other questions, Doug, with the proceedings?
Second.
Paul Bevler?
Thank you, Egerd. Good morning, Commissioners, Cass Tackler, P. S. Grace, Martin Fellers. As Egerd said, when we presented to you in January, there was general support for the approach of the project. There were some questions and concerns about different elements. In particular, as Egerd said, the presence of the mechanical equipment, the cantilever on the 26th Street side of the property, the treatment of the curtain wall as well around the new construction, and changes that we were proposing at the base of the building. Integrated mullions into the curtain wall system to give it articulation. I think significantly, you'll see in our renderings, mechanicals now have been shifted to the north now mostly over the new construction on 27th Street. They have changed their cladding, now better integrated into the new construction and design. We've also made changes at the base of the building to finalize removals for proposed storefront openings. John Gustafson, Mr. Gustafson wasn't here in January, we're going to run, just to do this very quickly, and just sort of refresh everybody's memory. This is the West Chelsea Historic District, approximately 30 buildings. Our site obviously is located pretty much at the center of the district. Interesting to note is that this is the only designated for triple high line which passes through the district and has a presence in the design approach for our project. An aerial view of the district, just giving you a sense of the scales that exist, we've got central storage in the foreground, and spare Lehigh, these massive full block scale properties. We're sort of at this hinge between these very large-scale properties and the smaller buildings to the east. The three sites that comprise this project, there's a parking lot on West 27th Street that is the only vacant lot in the historic district. It is directly adjacent to the Otis Elevator Building. Historically, there were buildings on this site that tied into the Otis Building. And then you can see this Otis Building, which has this sort of open court, which is really a sort of key component of the new circulation with a central agent that sits within that open court. On the left, the Otis Elevator Building, John Williams' design, completed in 1912, Charles Oldwell's John Williams Iron and Brass Foundry on West 26th Street. We're not going into a lot of detail on the restoration scope, but we talked a bit about it in January. There is an expansive scope restoration. This whole facade will be stripped of its paint, revealing the brick and limestone underneath. These fantastic two copper cornices will be closely inspected and repaired as required, basin repairs, and new windows matching the historic detailing and configuration, key parts of this project. A few updated renderings, and then Stephen will take you through some of the finer points of the design variation. But first, we want to show you, these are all updated renderings, this is a view looking down 27th Street. You can begin to see this sort of texture now that's layered into the curtain wall system, there are expressed mullions, vertical mullions and horizontal mullions. You can also just see puking up here at the corner, now there's some visibility of the mechanicals because we've shifted them on top of the new construction. You can also just make out the exoskeleton framing around the steel structure, sorry, the mechanical structure, which now relates back to the underlying structure system of the new construction. Also just point out that I think this is sort of this fantastic illustration of this progression of structure that exists in the district, this sort of progression from low-grading masonry from the far left, the margin, the verticality of the steel-framed buildings like Otis, the horizontality of these sort of cantilevered concrete construction of spare Lehigh, and then our building's sort of situated between all this, part of this sort of next step in that structural evolution. This view from the high line looking west on 26th Street, by shifting the mass of the mechanicals to the north, it sort of frees up the cantilever. So the cantilever is still obviously a component of this project, but it now is a bit more legible and light in its feeling. The other thing too that I think happens here is that the relationship between art design and spare Lehigh is also a little bit more clearly expressed, this sort of horizontality of the cantilever and the horizontality of spare Lehigh, massive, spare Lehigh now are sort of neatly knit together and I think much more, much more clear. And then the view on the 27th and 11th Avenue, again, sort of looking now back, the new construction on 27th and the restored Otis Building, removals of some of the proposed openings on 11th Avenue in particular, which maintains a certain solidity at the base of that building. Just to reiterate the key appropriateness points, these three sites, these three lots on the west end of the block have, for nearly 100 years, been sort of knit together through this shared history. So these are a series of maps of the Red Hill Street, John Williams' foundry's ownership, which began on the north side of 27th Street, spread to the current building on 26th Street as part of our site. And then, the beginning of the 20th century, the Otis Elevator Company purchases this western most lot on the block. And then, the beginning of the 20th century, they in turn actually take over all of the properties on the west side of the block that are part of our project's site, beginning in mid-1928. So for nearly 100 years, there has been this sort of shared history and connection that these lots have, and were native purchase that site in 19, sorry, 2015. And so we draw on that sort of interconnectedness in our design. There are distinctions, obviously, in the buildings, we're trying to maintain the individual identities of the individual white lots on the project site, but knit them together in a similar way to the way they've been connected to the early century. I'd mention the sort of evolution that's on display on the streets of the district from brick masonry to steel frame to concrete, reinforced concrete buildings, this move towards sort of increased daylighting, larger spans. We're sort of drawing on that progression in the spans that are possible with the new technologies and sort of new steel that is integrated into the new design. As well, the notion of layering, in this district, where we have the high lines sort of passing through the district, buildings connecting to it, there's a three-dimensionality that exists in this district that is different than other districts. And we're sort of drawing on the bridging and even bridge technologies for our new design. And then finally, just the notion of innovation. This image on the top right of Otis at the Crystal Palace in 1854, displaying the safety elevator for the first time, and then a view of the exterior of Crystal Palace, this sort of magnificent steel or, sorry, cast iron and glass architecture. These two technologies really would change the built landscape forever, making architecture reach the sky in a way that it had not to any point before. So the addition, the innovation of elevators and metal and glass architecture are really at the core of the project, the atrium at the center of the project with the exposed elevators and systems and circulation, and on the left, the advances in steel and metal architecture and glass architecture sort of reaching to this design proposal, needing together with the sort of innovations that are part of the site. Stephen.
Hi, Stephen Spence, who works at Harvard, I'll take that one. Just a quick overview of the different areas, I've obviously been working on this thing for, sign of the development, about two years. It has been almost been changing neighborhood in those two years, everything I can see that is something new, there's something evolving, there's a change, it will be built. And the challenge, I've said, being trying to work within that, plus respecting the historic district, we've had quite a functional knuckle of the development, you know, the historic district, whether the scale and the grain of the spare Lehigh, smaller grain, the emergent backdrop of Hudson, Norris, the red line, which is the historic, and how do you then manipulate, put something together, possibly often opportunity to try and break something off the moment, of the time, working around the door of new buildings, develop and refine, and reinforce the area of the character. What we've done primarily, I mean, it's a funny building, because every elevation, every building with elevation is different. It's not a thing which is seen in brutality. So each of the design, so are to be done specifically for that view. What we've done, it's rationalized and feel under the car park side, and spreading that by putting the plant space back, as I've said. Previously, we looked more to spread the plant space over the cantilever, but by putting it back, it's almost totally focused on the car park side. You've got single-story extension over the Otis, and then you've got the cantilever over the John Williams. Another interesting thing is trying to bring back two buildings together, use the one as a car park side, how to engage and knit something back together of two buildings that shouldn't be together. And I think exceptionally, we tried to do that, but the more inspirational idea was to try and create was that what was like one of the Otis building into the heart of the new scheme, we made that the focus and had the canvas, we moved the excitement and unifying of the district. Hidden from the street facade, but it's key in terms of the orientation and layout and the planning of the building, making a relevant building in the 20th century and bringing the Otis back to it. Trying to, I mean, it's part of our architecture, there's an articulation in terms of the way we put the floor place, trying to make it flexible, that it's adaptable, we put our stairs in places that are these disruptions, so trying to create something which is a good 21st century workspace, suitable for the place, we're moving it forward. We have the stairs and the elevators, the servicing's on 27th Street, so logically, you have a stair and the elevator, and the goods there on that side, you have a passenger in the middle which is serving the floor place, which you do, but there's new vibes, it's a new heart of the property. The previous roof plan, we didn't put all the key elements in the basement of the place that we were providing, as all of the essential equipment is on the roof. In terms of area, we haven't changed it. On the previous scheme, we were looking at spreading it out, so it was more one level predominantly over the cantilever elements, with cooling towers perched on top, and there was more positioning in that area, we needed tentacles around for the heating cradle, so it was set back smartly, but it was in all the block, all the top, top. In comparison to the later one, which what we've done, we've taken the same area, we haven't been able to reduce it, but the same area with double stack in terms of putting one above the other. 16-foot high, so we covered up the typical floor place because it doesn't fit, essentially, also needs the air, needs ventilation, so we did relocate certain elements, which we couldn't do, but we managed to keep it in the same area, a position of more to the north of the, north of the building. Service by, this could elevate it comes up, the equipment that comes through, replacement is required, we'd facilitate on the, because it's on the north. Again, we put that stair and elevator there, tried to split visually between the new and the old construction in terms of Otis and then new building. This is the previous one, obviously, spare Lehigh in the background, you have the cantilever, you've got the mass of the plant space, which was deliberately played down, you know, the anticipation of on that one, the contrast of the main mega-frame of the whole view in portion, with just the cooling towers perched on the top, and it's got a lift over us. In contrast, by moving it back, we, I think it reads stronger, constantly it reads stronger, I think that's a freedom expresses it in a clearer way, it doesn't have the, it doesn't have the heaviness, which I think is the big world concern about, especially with the original. There's a lightness to it, okay, compensate about putting heavier, the 27th Street elevation, but that's part begins from the, from the key view. We've also looked at options on the articulation, we're not extending the frame, which it looked too much below, and the spans for the plant space are not as onerous as what people do, they're not specifically able to do the transfers and the, you know, so we developed this simple frame in a similar spirit, in a similar way, exposing the columns and beams and the raised even for smaller ties, but I think it is a scale of the grain that doesn't contrast with the way we do it. Set up before and after elevations, this was the previous scheme, primarily the bulk bit on the top there, I think it's similar, it's a more elegant structure and massing. You never really see, these streets are very narrow, obviously, 11th Avenue, but the 26th and 27th, you never really get to read it, but just in terms of, in terms of, the key heights. 11th Avenue, the very difference, I think on this one, we've also removed two of the openings, we've reinstated the protection barrier, the play, to get the plant up on the top, and it's very remote. The 26th Street, the failure of elevation of the building there, it still has as before, but yet the plants, the top, yet not really noticeable from the dispute elevation. This is probably the most dramatic change, but it's one of the elevations I cannot see because it's got the other, John Williams, including Google, in this location. In terms of the plant, you see the vault, we moved it to a more foot, moved it back as small as it could be physically contained. In terms of the articulation, again, the original one, we had this, we would treat these as deep, thick, laid sheets, deliberately played them down, the silicon joint, because it would prevent, in contrast to the main frame. What we've introduced, it's quite a small device, but it's a rotten silicon, I mean, it's around the silicon detail like that, it's just a small articulation, protrusion, and the reset, which gives it definition, and gives it, gives it a finer range and richness and texture to the surface, which I think is, on this one, you just start, I mean, it's quite a minimal thing, we've introduced horizontally and vertically, and every molding, but you just start to give a, reaches that, I guess, it's, 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 it starts with the verticality of these, sort of these finer elements, in a similar way to the, the, back. In terms of the views, 27th Street, we're just going to run, that's the previous one, we've also lightened the, rather made it look dark and heavy, we've lightened the plant spaces in the lower rungs. Just start to see that, I think what we've again, we tried to get all the good elements of the scheme in terms of the second back, the step backs, the, the spare Lehigh, and the richness of how says it, there's an element of trying to blend in with things that don't particularly, it's not that easy. Deliberately get the separation of the Otis building, the vertical level, and blend in contrast to the, contrast to the new build, from high, and again, it's a slightly out-of-date, this building is now completed, relatively costly to say, it's a change in, it's a change in the landscape, it's a change in the building. The plant is more obvious, but again, I think it's still respectful of the step in the spare Lehigh in the background, the articulation helps, the panels, the movers, the expression and articulation, so that it becomes, it's too defined in terms of the detail. The Otis, from the high line moving through, I think, again, with the backdrops and the new emergent buildings, the, the, the historic ones, it's, it's... new emergent buildings, the name has been historic ones, it's come to view in that landscape. From the 27th, again, we deliberately kept, as I say, you don't see, set it back, you don't see the plant moving forward, the lighter, the over runs, we've obviously put the reinstated building, these are delivery base, servicing base, of 27th Street, so they don't access to the first level, so it's a bit, uh, it's a bit more. For the round, I think the main difference here is one room to two, to use, a few signs and two outdoors, it's essentially the same, it's obviously the new build. This was taken about a year ago now, so these things, the background is completed and will turn over, you know, it's captured that moment in time, or, I think, we deliberately lightened them, just to contrast the sky, not heavy, visually not heavy, it is visually not as dark, which fits and blends in all the sky and, um, no change on this one, I think, just appearing, again, as I said last time, your door, the back is against the wall on 26th Street here, looking, it's not in real perspective, but a difficult one to see, but we're just interested to see when it starts to appear and merge, and obviously we reinstated the elevation of the John Woo buildings, in key to the part of the project. Jump on that previous one, I think the main thing to change here, going backwards and forwards, is obviously the mass of the plant through, the articulation is successful, I think what it does is accentuate the cantilever more, and I think also we've built down into a bronze, dark bronze, the underside, it's probably more reflective, it's heavier, it's bigger, it's more dynamic element now, I think it's probably more legible to read in terms of the new build over the car park, the cantilever, the density is obviously the Otis building, but it's legible in the simplicity, I think, in terms of the Otis design. Like I said, the key element here is setting it back, in terms of the expression and the more, again, trying to work with a historic piece in a contemporary way, respectful of, respectful of all.
Were there any questions?
Yes. Sorry, sorry. Just quickly, show you the changes in the basement of the building, so the proposed ground floor plan on the left and the revised plan, so we've eliminated two entries on the left, existing, previously proposed, and current proposals, so we've eliminated these entries, which is significant, I think that we're reusing the entry at the center, and we're just proposing two entries on the corners. On 27th Street, we're reusing those three existing openings, two days where we continue to use for the truck loading, and then this bay will be used as an entry. And then on 26th Street, we'll create a new opening here, in the middle, which is accessing a separate retail space, and then the bay on the far left, which already has a door created to the base, we're proposing to use that as well, for an entry. So we've limited the number of removals, particularly on the primary elevation on the level that we have details, which you saw before, these haven't changed, and then just finally, this rendering, which you've now seen, you know, three component parts, an addition on Otis, which you only see from a few blocks away, new construction on 27th Street that builds on this sort of progression of structure that's so present and prevalent in the district, and then the cantilever on 26th Street, which ties into this sort of interconnectedness and shared history of buildings on the site, and to get, very much of a Richard Rogers project, respecting the score context, creating something very expressive, very honest, and we hope to be quite helpful.
Any questions? So we'll start our discussion, and I just want to, you know, set it up before we turn it over the table, and I think that last time, as Egbert said, we had a very detailed presentation, and I think most commissioners were persuaded that one could do a new building that overlapped and intersected with the two historic buildings, because of the shared history of the site and the complex, that sort of nature, it is a complex, and this continuing to read as and operate as a complex, and I think that the metalized design approach was also, I think, commissioners felt persuaded by that as an approach because of the industrial nature, but also the sort of referencing innovative construction technologies that you even find in this district, because the district has buildings that started out as brick, low-bearing buildings, to concrete, steel frame buildings, and of course, terribly high, and then also, of course, the high line is another structure. So moving to the big picture, I think that there was some support, but there were definitely concerns about the treatment of the glass and the articulation of the glass, as well as the number of store-bought openings being created in Otis, which has been reduced. And then most of the conversation really focused on the cantilever, which is visible from 26th Street, and some commissioners felt that it should be set back to be less of the cantilever, others felt that maybe it could work if the design, sort of, if it was more, in terms of its design, integrated with the new building, and that is more as part of the new building, and had some separation from the historic building below, and so, you know, the applicants have kind of taken a two-pronged approach and set back the mechanical portion of it, and then I think, looking at how that glasses are articulated, I think there is an attempt to kind of integrate all the new construction to kind of read as one body, distinct from the buildings below. So I think that's where we were, and I just wanted to, you know, turn it over to you to see where we are now. So, Adi?
I think that I was at the time in support of the cantilever, even at the size and the kind of scale, that it was under thin, and I feel so, I still really appreciate this attempt to create a kind of narrative about the lineage of structural systems in the neighborhood. I'm especially convinced, something I understand now, but didn't understand last time, is the extent to which this is not a kind of, a single object, a building, that is really this type kit of parts that fit their way into the assemblage. But what's so interesting to me is that the kit of parts here is made up of these over-scaled exoskeleton cubes, you could say, or, you know, blocks. And I think that that's the most interesting aspect of the design, and so what I'm still having trouble with is now the molten, the molten inside of that, like I actually still want to read the, you know, these huge glass panels behind the exoskeleton, I want to read the volume of that structural system. And also trouble with the stair element, which I think is the most dated aspect of this design, there's something about it that's so kind of knocking of the moment, it's sort of eighties, and I can imagine that the stair falling as well could have been like one of these exoskeleton blocks, but turned on its side, you know, in other words, tiny, it could be the same as the others, but vertical, because it's this kind of, almost like a Lincoln blocks, you know, Lincoln blocks, a bit vertical and horizontal, but all with oversized exoskeleton. Anyway, I think the project is really interesting, but still, the molten and the stair tower feel not quite right, but I'm in support of where it takes us.
Okay, all right, great. Would anyone like to go next? Michael?
I feel something with the molten modification is a positive one, I think it distracts from the reading of the overall structure, and the concept, the theme of the building, the stature, the texture, and the flexing at a more tactile level that would improve the building, not only as a design itself, but more importantly, from our point of view, as it relates to the context, there are, scale throughout this area, I think this is, the stair relief building is rife with molten, and I think that creating connection to that quality is a positive thing. I think Adi's comment, the dated, not datedness of it is interesting, but kind of, I guess, for me, this is kind of like going to a Bruce Springsteen concert. Bruce Springsteen is, you know, what had his moment, let's say, when he was the avant-garde, not today, it was yesterday, but that doesn't make it any less pleasing for those who like that kind of thing. I think that it's much more about a personal style that has been created and identified with the auteur, and that auteur is employing that style here, whether that auteur is the auteur du jour or not, can be judged by others, but I think it's certainly a beautiful example of someone whose work, that person, I think, is totally cool, I think a Bruce Springsteen concert, I'd use guys anyway. That said, the cantilever was the thing that concerned me in the past, and it still does today, although I think they made it better, I think that the shifting of the volume of the mechanicals off of it made it a lighter, a lighter element, has its view of the low buildings, I mean, for me, this view is the quicker one, where you have these remarkable lower buildings, and then buildings on our site, that we've stored, kind of leading up to, piling up to the stair at Lehigh as you cross that avenue. And I think it's definitely better in that it makes, it makes the gesture lighter and more easily isolatable from the historical context, which is an appropriate way to add something, I think. It's a way that we've seen many other architects add to historic buildings, right, trying to allow their, their objects to be visually isolated from the historic context. However, I still am troubled by the disjuncture or lack of relationship between the cantilever and the Otis building, the way kind of just lax into it, and kind of clips the corner of the path and stuff like that. And it struck me yesterday, after I previewed this, a kind of inward worry about it, and that inward worry is the 430 building, you know, people just don't like the 430 building. I like the 430 building, but this is very much the 430 building, root south and west, but, and I fear that the brutality associated with that building will carry with it a majority of quality to this one. That said, I'm willing to go for it, if others are, I think that, I think that it's, I think it's worth it to have, I'm willing to, I'm willing to trust the applicant as one of his most important architects of these decades to go at, I think it's important for New York to have it, for the Neymar district to have it. I really wish there were a way to better integrate geometrically the new, the old, so they talk to each other and didn't just kind of park amongst each other.
Okay. And I do want to, just to neglect it again, to mention that we did get written comments from HDC, which were also made available to you prior to today, for opposing, reiterating in opposition to the project. Kim?
I wanted to say that I really agree with my opinion, but I always was in support of the cantilever, and I was thinking that the district would really handle something this way, considering the size of all those massive buildings, like the stair at Lehigh building, and the molten, I think, are fine, because it's seen in proportion with the windows, even the punch windows below, they're kind of in proportion, they've scaled it down to make the cantilever look better to them, and the stair, I really appreciate the stair as a kind of salute to all of these exterior stairs, all throughout Tribeca and all over the West Side, and even harkening back to the high line and stuff, that's all of that exterior exposed steel and concrete sometimes, it's out there just for the utilitarian purpose of circulation, and I actually like it in the orange, because it, you know, differentiates itself from the cantilever proportion itself, so we're seeing the circulation and the structure, and I think it's actually worked out very nicely. The thing that was worrying me was that glass at the parapet underneath, and I didn't quite get why that was, except that they really wanted to see how it's hovering above the lumbar, so it's, it's not as ill-tempered, but it's a little unusual, I'd say that, going on top of the wall of that mist, and someone taps that glass, and it's like a small piece that, yeah.
So I guess the question is, do you do something different to continue to isolate the two, or is that an opportunity where someone just, material-wise?
I guess the glass is better than a rim or a full parapet, because you can, you do see the addition, but it's still wonderful.
Do you?
I was very enthusiastic about, you know, the first result that was presented to us, but I have to say that I think with the comments by the commissioners and the changes that you've made, I think that the project is even stronger. The articulation in the brass, in terms of what you did with the molten, is, works very I think the shifting of the massing of the mechanicals back is really, really helpful in terms of making the building feel a little wider. And if you can move it back to 51, and it really does help in having, in helping, I really appreciate the relationship of now of the overhang to the buildings beyond it. I think this massing overall works really well. From this perspective, everything reads as being just a little lighter, and I really like this integration of the old, older architecture with the new, in a way that kind of blends in in terms of coloring, scale, et cetera, so I think it works really well, and I just want to say, in terms of your presentation, the discussion of the introduction of the Otis elevator, and the fact that this building is part of this complex, and that this, the Otis elevator building, and then this new addition, is part of the evolution, is very significant. I mean, that was a really, in 1852, a major, major event, having just recently finished the Colson Whitehead, now the Intuist rest. I even appreciate more what you're doing here, so I would like to say that I wholeheartedly support this, I also like the way the built-in meets the grounds a little more in terms of the entrances, and thank you for your lovefulness, and I think this will be, will be a great addition to the landscape of this neighborhood, and so, Tom?
I mean, Cash is right, I was not here for the first time around, so I am going to make a little more basic comment. This is a very odd historic district, its shape, its size, its context, its cohesiveness, or I would say its lack of cohesiveness, there's a theme to it, but, you know, everything is... There's a theme to it, but, you know, everything is different. And for that reason alone, I think this building fits in quite nicely. I look at page 25, and that sort of tells a story for me. There are six or seven different things going on here on 25 on the rooftop. And this is, you know, if you go, if you had a rock around the city, there's Brooklyn and Queens and some of those that are on the waterfront, and look at how industrial buildings were purchased in one at a time and united with one another, that's exactly how it's done, is in somewhat of a random and not so consistent way. Things relate, but only in time, they don't relate in the details. So I think that's exactly the way to look. I must say, I may be too young to remember what exterior stairwells looked like in the eighties. Do you remember Bruce Springsteen and further pads in my hair? But I have no problem with exterior stairwell or the mullions in the windows, and I'm fully prepared to approve this, as is despite Michael's comparison of it to the Port Authority building.
Dan?
Well, I was one of the people who was concerned by the cantilever last time, but I believe Michael, trusting the architects to overcome that concern. I think the mechanical part of the building definitely did lighten it up and made it more logical. And being able to put the concern, I'm going to trust that's very good context. And I think, I agree also with the exterior stairs, I think it's a signature defining feature.
Yeah, what I liked best about the proposal to begin with was the, is the exoskeleton and the way the A family, the exoskeleton were treated and integrated. From my point of view, that was exciting and interesting. I did have some concerns, particularly about the storefront openings and also about the cantilever. Storefront openings, I think they have, you know, reduced, which I put it from my point of view. And I think the color change actually works and the upper proportions to sort of integrate pretty shortly from a distance. So I think, and I think this concern is the cantilever. And there are basically only two ways to go, really try to reduce it or try to make it more prominent. And I just, I think that this rearrangement of the mechanicals has really strengthened the way the cantilever presents and kind of freed it up, so that it's become a lighter and almost separate element. And yes, it's not integrated, but I think that now it's separated from the historic building and in context, I think I really can support the way it's presenting. So I think the group has presented.
I just want to say, in fact, I have one thing, which is about what Michael said about the Port Authority. I think that the reason I was, and I have been so supportive of the cantilever where it was and the overscaled articulation of these exoskeleton boxes has to do with the fact that, this is more than anything else in my view, acknowledgement of the fact that what the Port Authority meant for the West Side was then. Now we are far west, we are Hudson Yards. It's the West Side and all the things that enabled the new development, you know, the free money, the High Line support, all of it. This is what this is. I mean, there's a memory of, there's a relationship to the Port Authority, no matter what, but it's a kind of relationship that's been so, so changed. Its scale has moved to something else altogether, which is in dialogue, in the Hudson Yards scale, and with, you know, the kind of the gloss and the potential residential aspects, the kind of the more kind of lifestyle on the far west side. And so that's why I just think it kind of makes it to the extent.
Did you want to add anything, Michael?
You know, I've been supportive of the cantilever design from initial, everything. And I think the design has improved. And to Michael's point, I think that contextually, I think this is a signature of a particular architect and artist. And in my mind, just in world, if you look at that page 51, it's sort of, you know, paying homage to the history of all this elevator, you know, the technology such a breakthrough that allows to, but in a way, looking at this is also contextual to me about the 1961 zoning, about gradually stepping back, this layer of setting tax, and to Alan's point, that, you know, the industrial context. So to me, this is an element that sort of ties in the old, the missionary and the Starrett, and then how do you use it as a unifier in the middle? And I think this, I think the enhancement with the mullion, I think the destruction of the mullions really felt, really drastic. And I have no problem with this whole thing. I think the stall front, but also this is an enhancement.
All right, great, yes, Michael.
Oh, straight. I, irrespective of this project, I think that this scale of project is one where it brings to mind the idea that maybe a project of this size, which has been already seen over a long time, is that there's so much happening with this. And I think we have talked about some details, but I think that if you compare the focus we have applied to this project at the granular level with a brownstone or a ramp or something like that, it's kind of not fair to the details of it, which are as important here, if not more so a ramp or townhouse edition. So just arguing for the idea that projects like this might benefit on a multi-stage kind of review by us.
And in fact, sometimes projects like this, you know, by the time they actually leave us, they really get into the development of those details. I think it's, some of those projects need to have a sort of scheduling of the design where it's a little differently. And so sometimes we do have people come back to us and give us that finer detail, so that may be an opportunity we have here as well. That, I would like to say, I think that's a very interesting point, Michael. And I agree with you that projects evolve and designs get tweaked. You realize, oh my God, we should have done this, and this will enhance what we've already done. But I also think that it's very important for us to not put ourselves in, because I don't want to be put in a position where we are, you know, getting, we're picking apart the design so much that we're actually starting to revise it in a way that not only wasn't the original intent, but wasn't, but it hurts the original design. And I mean, you're an architect, so you know, there's like sort of an invisible line, I don't know when you cross it, but at some point it can be crossed. And especially with architects who are very talented and extremely thoughtful about how they not only design, but problem solve as they move along. I just would hate to deem, move the intended approach that everybody embraced in a particular time case.
I don't disagree with that, but let's face it, we are in the weeds with the typical townhouse or ramp edition or storefront edition. And I think it's just unfair to them and to the districts as a whole. If we feel that they merit that granular level of attention, then there's no reason why we shouldn't apply it to bigger projects. And I think that as this conversation, as this conversation is shown, we give plenty of deference to an architect's quality, which can be important in the existing project. So I don't, I, as an architect, who gets newed all the time, wouldn't have a problem with it, because that's kind of the job that we have here. And it is, I mean, having seen projects get realized over the years, and then coming back and looking at them and saying, huh, I didn't really think about that, it was more prompt to me that, it's kind of like with you, you know, you haven't had this series of personal experience. Oh, you're in school. Yeah, well, it's different. It's different, let me cut it. You know, of a view, you focus on one thing that's more the product or as much the product of the group dynamic than as it is the project itself. And I worry that the, that that necessity, simply because we have a agenda, we have a certain comfort, everyone wants to move on, that that tends to keep us looking here and not looking there. And I think if there are systems that we can put in place to have to force us to look where we should be looking, it would be better for projects in historic districts, especially the paper ones and new ones.
Okay. So, but I do think today we have enough votes for an approval. We'll do that, there were some details that were raised, and I got these thoughts about mullions, because everybody liked the idea of mullions, so maybe there's a way to think about reconciling those two opinions about those details as you continue to develop the project. And so to the extent that as you develop it, we see changes, we can think about whether they weren't coming back and presented to you also. But with that, it is, John, would you make the motion? Oh, it's hot, I'm sorry.
In the matter of LPC 1934154, flattened through West 27th Street to 11th Avenue, and 549 West 26th Street in West Chelsea Historic District in Italian Renaissance Revival Star Office, factory building, designed in Russellville in 1911-12, an American round arch-style factory building designed by Charles Caldwell and built in 1900-1901, and empty lot. The application is to construct a new building, a rooftop additions and alter the subs. I note that building styles, scale, materials and details are among the features that contribute to the special architectural and historic character with Chelsea West Historic District. I also note that the buildings within the West Chelsea Historic District reflect important trends of development in industrial architecture in the United States and in New York, and the district experienced different waves of development throughout the 19th, 20th centuries, bringing in innovative types of building construction. I further note that while the buildings on the site were built at different times, the Otis elevator company occupied most of them by 1930, forming an industrial complex, and that the attached apartment lot at 550 West 27th Street was formerly occupied by another Otis factory building that was well required to designation. Finally, I note that the large scope of restoration work, including paint, paint stripping and metal and masonry repairs, is being undertaken at both historic buildings and review and stack level. I recommend approval, finding that the buildings historically were part of the complex, and that the empty lot at 550 West 27th Street was occupied by another Otis factory building before its demolition. Therefore, the construction of a new building on site and rooftop additions that connect over that, the other buildings is consistent with the historic evolution of these contiguous lots as part of the Otis complex. That the proposed work will be consistent with a multi-layered architectural history of the district, which resulted in an eclectic building stock ranging from 1885 through 1946. That the district has a history of developing new industrial construction systems to which the design of those buildings embraces and contributes. That the design of the new buildings and the additions, including exposed structural metallic systems and metal glass, panels with mullions and interior circulation visible from the exterior of the buildings, forms an innovative functional design that blends through the industrial character of the historic district and contemporary manner. That the steel exoskeleton framework recalls the scale method of construction from High Line, which runs through a portion of the district, and that other utilitarian features like bush connectors between buildings and opening to the buildings for trains and trucks, and is referred to be an industrial area that is unique to this historic district. That removal of historic masonry used in the middle of the rear of the street by the side of the sides will not result in removal of any significant features that these without historical, were historically hidden by the previous building on the site. That a part of the historic sidewall, which was always exposed, will be incorporated in the new design, thereby providing a visible reminder of the history of the site. That the setback portion of the new building facade at 27th Street ground floor creates a clear separation between the new building and historic Otis factory, creates a harmonious transition between new and old. That the rooftop addition will instead happen in primary in sizes of both 26th and 27th streets and will not interfere with historic roof lines and prices. That the overhang of the cantilever following over 549 West 26th Street creates a large, separated space between it, that receives the recessed rooftop addition and historic roofline, and binds it visually to the new buildings between it. The recessed rooftop addition, I'm sorry, using consistent materials and finishes at all surfaces, including its underside, and for though these reasons, does not detract from the building, historic building. That the rooftop mechanical equipment will be stacked and contained almost entirely above the new building within the cantilever as a pure architectural form. That the materials of the screened rooftop mechanical equipment featuring a light bronze and gray metal panels are in keeping the material palettes of rooftop accretions in the district, and the articulation of screen ties the mass of the equipment into the overall design. That the majority of the ground floor openings and all historic cast iron window frames and door features will be maintained. That the enlarging section, that enlarging select openings at the ground floor will only require removal of portions of flat, non-decorative granite water table brick, and will allow for the adaptive reuse of the ground floors for retail tenants. That the main entrance infill at 260 11th Avenue is a later non-historical operation of the building, therefore is removable, will not affect any significant features. That the configuration of the proposed storefront infill is in keeping with the existing configuration of historic ground floor windows. That the extended frames through the entrance will match the historic cast iron frames and transits materials profile dimensions. That the proposed entrance infill at 549 West 26th Street featuring aluminum framework, the large display window pair of entrance doors is in keeping with modern infill within altered commercial spaces found elsewhere in the historic district. That the original multi-light configuration of the historic windows is not integral to the design of the building. Proposed one-over-one windows will match the later historic condition seen in historic tax photograph. That the proposed bracket signs and transit signs are well scaled to the building and will only be attached to non-historic aluminum window frames or plain brick.
Second. Paul and David? Any opposed? Okay, that's approved, thank you.
All right, we'll move to the next public meeting item, number five, LPC 19-3163, an application for a certificate of appropriateness in the borough of Manhattan, block 105, lot 19315, Central Park West, East Side, Central Park West Historic District. A neo-renaissance style apartment building designed by Schwartz and Rose, built in 1912. The application is to modify cantilever bulkheads at the roof. This was presented at the public hearing, February 5th, 2019.
Good morning, Fisher, Elizabeth Beadon, Preservation Staff. This item is 315 Central Park West, located at the corner of West 94th Street and the East Side, Central Park West Historic District. The application is to modify three existing elevator bulkheads at the roof. The commissioners first reviewed this item at the public hearing of February 5th, 2019, because the enlarged bulkheads would be more than minimally visible from public thoroughfares over the primary and secondary facades. And therefore, this did not meet the rules for staff level review. At the time, some commissioners expressed concerns with the visibility of the bulkheads and requested that the applicant explore ways to reduce the height of the bulkheads. The applicant has revised the design per the commissioner's comments, and I will be walking you through the details of this revised proposal. The proposal now involves vertically extending three elevator bulkheads by approximately one to two feet to allow for new machine rooms and elevator overrides. The previous proposal involved extending the bulkheads by approximately 10 feet. This height has been reduced by a change in This height has been reduced by a change in machinery and slowing the speeds of the elevator cap, thereby reducing the override space required. Here you can see the existing and proposed south elevation on West 91st Street, the existing and proposed east elevation along Central Park West, and the existing and proposed rear facade, which is visible from 91st and 92nd Streets. The proposed plans and existing and proposed sections depict the new mechanical equipment and upgraded elevator cabs. And here you'll see the renderings of the proposed extension, which will be finished in a box stucco by feature metal access stairs. Here you can see the rendering of the previous proposed bulkhead over the primary Central Park West facade in the second images. And on the right, you can see the revised design here. Sorry, this is a Central Park West review, view, previous proposal, and revised proposal. And here are images of the extended bulkheads visible over the rear facade from West 91st and West 92nd Streets. Again, the images in the center, you see the previous proposal and the revised proposal here on the right. The existing bulkhead adjacent to the water tower is currently visible from public thoroughfares, and the revised proposal reduces the amount of additional bulk. The revisions also reduce the visibility of the bulkhead on the right side. The applicant is available to answer any questions.
Okay, this is a little bit big. All, all three of the bulkheads have been lowered in height, so at this point, now, in most of the views, you just see a small portion of it, and the only one where you really still see some or significant portion of the bulkhead is this one view over the courtyard inside from behind, just push it back from the design. Is there any other questions? Okay, so, thanks. Okay, so, do people feel this is in the range of good and latest books?
Completely responsive to what we asked for. It also gave us a little bit of ammunition for the future of this concept, reducing the size of the overrun by reducing the speed of the cap, of the truck, the amount of discussion that has.
Now we don't.
Now we don't.
Good, okay, so I think we'll make that motion.
In the matter of LPC 1931963, 315 Central Park West, Upper West Side, Central Park West Historic District. A neo-Renaissance-style apartment building designed by Schwartz and Rose, built in 1911-12. The application is to modify the kind of the bulkheads in the roof. I note that the building's style, scale, materials, and details are among the features that contribute to the special architectural historic character of the Upper West Side, Central Park West Historic District. I recommend approval, finding that the work will not alter or destroy any significant architectural features of the building, but the presence of the bulkheads will be in keeping utilitarian rooftop installations typically found in buildings of this type, style, and age. That the simple stucco plating of the new bulkheads and bulkhead extensions will match the material of existing visible bulkheads. The metal proposed rough colored finish will help these installations to blend with the side facade of the adjacent building we received from you. That only one bulkhead will be linearly visible over the primary facade, and another bulkhead will be moderately visible over secondary facade, both of which will be in keeping with visible bulkheads found on buildings of this type throughout the historic district. That the bulkhead and access stair visible over the secondary facade will be seen in the context of other existing rooftop accretions along the block, and will not disrupt individual roof lining. And the proposed work will not detract from the special architectural historic character of the building of Upper West Side, Central Park West Historic District.
Call up paper. Any opposed? That's approved, thank you.
All right, we're going to finish the last public meeting item. We're transitioning here to item six, LPC 19-2756. An application for a certificate of appropriateness in Aurora, Manhattan, block 1219, block 121. 121 West 88th Street, Upper West Side, Central Park West Historic District, Renaissance Revival Square House, designed by Lawrence and Beattie. The application is to conserve the additions and modify masonry. It's presented at the public hearing of January 15th, 2019. No action taken at this time.
Good morning, commissioners, Stephanie Crowe, Preservation Staff. This is 121 West 88th Street, working at Upper West Side, West 88th Street, between Encino and Comodus Avenues, in the Upper West Side, Central Park West Historic District. This proposal was initially presented at the public hearing of January 15th, 2019. The proposal at that time consisted of constructing a step-up plating competition with solar arrays, and each might be a slightly larger. Constructing a three-story hall with rear addition featuring a double-height steel window and door assembly, and two or two steel windows with castelletto walls, and rebuilding the top floor of the rear facade and rucksack masonry openings, all visible from West 89th Street over the playground. Commissioners present at that hearing express their concerns of support for the rooftop addition. However, they were concerned that the removal of the rear L would disrupt the relationship with the other Ls in the road. Some commissioners were also concerned about the amount of losing of the bottom two floors. The applicants have revised the proposal to address much of those concerns, and are now proposing to rebuild the rear facade and L to match existing planes and between the existing fenestrated pattern at the top two floors, and featuring different multi-light sealed window and door assemblies, and the double-height window and door assembly at the basement of the first floors, which would wrap around the rear facade and L. Here you can see the proposal in the context of the rear yard, and the playground to the north. And here you can see the visibility of the building from West 89th Street and playground. The architect is here to further explain.
Okay, well, let's just see if we have any questions. So I think that this was a row of buildings that is visible through the playground, the school. The adults attended. And while the fenestration pattern of the row has been altered, they all retain their historic L, the volume of their L. And so the last concrete saw this, that L should be still referenced in the design of the addition. So at this point, the proposal does not include any addition in office or new construction cases to be followed, but changing the fenestration and probably the wrap of the last L of the building. So is there any questions we can ask the applicant to come up, otherwise we'll go to the section. Okay, so, Stephanie, maybe we just put the elevations up. Actually, no. So who would like to start? Michael?
Well.
Okay.
I think it's, who cares what I feel, but it's kind of that personal feeling. But I think that this is much more appropriate to the view if place along variation fenestration, what similarities massing that is shown in the rest of the block. Therefore, I think it's appropriate.
Diane?
Yeah, I do feel like those double-height windows need a little bit more between them just to.
Parlance, talk.
Yeah, wider spandle is something to make it a little more, you know? Something that's a little out there for the rest of the back.
Yeah, I agree with the proposal appropriate now, and I agree with Diane about adding the lower half of the swivel addition.
Working the stage.
Do you agree with that? I think so. There are people who feel that there should be a little more half of that standard. Well, we can work that out with staff, otherwise we can make up a motion, so.
In the matter of the district, appropriateness for Aurora, Manhattan, obviously, 1927-561, when 21 West 88th Street, Upper West Side, Central Park West Historic District, Renaissance Revival Square House, designed by Lawrence and Beattie, and built in 1898. Application is to reconstruct, create the area of new accretions, and modify masonry openings. I recommend approval. I note that the style, building style, scale, materials, and details are among the features that contribute to the special architectural historic character of the Upper West Side, Central Park West Historic District. I recommend approval for modification, finding that the proposed work will not alter damage or destroy any significant architectural features in the building. That the proposed rooftop addition and mechanical equipment will only be visible from select bondage points on West 89th Street at the opposite side of the block. The proposed one-story rooftop addition will be set back for the front and rear facades, thereby helping to maintain the sense of the building's original massing. The design and materiality of rooftop additions, determined age, stucco plating, and metal window and door assemblies, will help to differentiate the addition from the building and be consistent with materials found on rooftop additions in this historic district. The reconstruction of the rear facade and extension of the existing height and massing will maintain the building's relationship to its neighbors in the road. That the red brick, cast stone, and multi-plane steel windows and doors at the reconstructed rear facade will utilize a traditional material palette, in keeping with the residential character of the building. At the top floor, the rearish facade will be rebuilt with new brickwork at its current height and plane, and will match the original masonry openings, with the exception of one window that will be converted to a door. And the proposed work will not detract from the special architectural historic character of the building of the Upper West Side, Central Park West Historic District. However, I note that the large double-height opening and curtain wall, which is visible from public thoroughfare, will detract from the residential character of the building in the row, and therefore I recommend a wider horizontal spandle, or spandle or mullion be added between floor to floor for the staff.
Call up paper. Any opposed? It's approved with that modification.
Okay, we're going to jump down to the public hearing items. First, item number one, this is LPC 19-36079, an application for a binding award, Brooklyn Block 25, Block 1 Water Street, in the Fulton Fairview Historic District. Small outdoor, small outdoor associated with a marine fire station in 26. The application is to construct an attached restaurant in the building.
The subject property is 1 Water Street, located in the Fulton Fairview Historic District. The proposal before you today is the construction of an adjoining restaurant pavilion. The commissioners should note that the host shed has been reconstructed twice, first due to deterioration in 1995, and subsequently after a fire in 2004. The applicants are here to further discuss this proposal and answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Good morning, my name is Eric Landau, I'm the president of Brooklyn Ridge Park. I'm joined by a number of colleagues, including Miles and Alex Pincus, who have been selected as the concessionaires of this space. I'm going to speak for just a minute, and I'm going to turn over to them to walk them through. But just for some contextual history, the Fulton Fairland Landing was under the previous under the management of New York City Economic Development Corporation, and was transferred to Brooklyn Ridge Park in the fall of 2018, prior to, excuse me, fall 2017. For about 10 years or so prior to that, there was a concession on the pier itself, known as Buzzing Bar. It was an outdoor food concession that did hot dogs with cheese, beer and wine, and had a tent full closure over that after seating area. When EDC transferred the management to Brooklyn Ridge Park in the fall of 17, though that license agreement was concluding at the end of that calendar year, we extended the existing agreement an additional year so that we could, as part of our typical process, put out an RFP for a new concession space, which we awarded in this December, after putting up an RFP this past fall. We were very pleased to announce in December with our board, the selection of Alex and Miles Pincus to operate what you will see here. We have a history with Alex and Miles operating a concession on the other end of the park at 6. Pilot, a 1920 scooter, that is an oyster bar and restaurant. And with that, I have to turn over to Alex and Miles, who will walk you through the specifics. And I thank you for your time.
Good morning, thank you for having us here today. The site that we are looking at for this concession is a very important historic site, it's Fulton Fairland Landing. The site where George Washington fled Portland during the Revolutionary War. It's had many different incarnations of buildings and pieces of architecture and infrastructure throughout time, starting with, well, not starting with, but sort of peaking with the Fulton Fair Terminal, which is one of the most interesting buildings in New York history, which unfortunately was demolished. Over time, it became a heavily-used maritime center, and you can see quite industrial as well, acting as both a port and as a passageway for people traveling to and from Portland from New York. In the early 1900s, the site was converted to a marine fire station, which has, which is has within the building on the landing itself, and fireboats would dock here over the course of time. Part of our proposal, which is not on review today, but a note, is that we will be actually bringing a vintage fireboat back to the landing that was recently retired from the FDNY. Couple views from a different perspective of the pier. You can see the small kiosk here, sorry, excuse me, it's just a white, thank you, which will be adjoining the property that we are proposing to build. And the fireboat that you see docked there is in the location where we will be returning the fireboat. As you can see, you know, coming into the 70s, the site became quite an urban, milder nation of interesting objects. You can see here the sort of industrialized, industrialized, more contemporary version of the fire station, and actually floating a barge and export here. And bringing you to the present day, or the most recent incarnation of the site, currently there's barge music, which remains on the site, and then the previous concession area in the location where we're proposing our project there, which was effectively some referencing with a big tent on top of it. That is the current condition of the site and the shed alongside. Just a couple more views. It's, I'm of the understanding that the fire department burned the shed down repeatedly over the years as a sort of test case scenario for larger fires. So the materiality of the shed has changed quite a bit over the years, but the shape effectively remains the same, as I understand it. Kind of a detailed summary of the last proposal regarding the shed. Just a couple of projects that we've done in New York that are somewhat relevant here. We operate Pilot, which is an oyster bar aboard a historic racing school from 1924, which is on the south side of the park at Pier 6. Part of our business is actually academia's preservationist, we restore historic ships, and we also restore historic buildings in the world. And also, we recently took a 30,000 square foot site on Governor's Island, it was an asphalt parking lot, and designed and built Island Oyster, which is an outdoor oyster bar, and which was actually just nominated for James Beard Award for design last week. And this is part of the inspiration of where we decided to build with our proposal for this site. Just a couple more minimal structures, we're also kind of inspired by the carousel from the north side of the bridge. As an architect and a preservationist, my philosophy regarding putting buildings in historic sites is really focused on not trying to pretend to be. historic sites is really focused on not trying to pretend to be a historic building, but to put something in that is clean and minimalist and as airy as possible in the site. So we effectively try to design a building that is there as little as possible. It is an open-air pavilion with operable glass side that would remain open throughout the summer and in the winter months would be closed. Effectively, we try to make it, try and, we raise the ceiling and height of the kiosk so that effectively you can have a straight-through view as a pedestrian when you're engaging with the site, and so that people who come to visit can also sit within the building and have a clear view out at the bridge of the ground. And there's a view looking back at the city and another version where we're in winter and outside would be closed. Part of what we've noticed having the pier currently empty is that the site, people come really quickly and they leave really quickly. They just come and take a look, and we're really excited about doing something that sort of provides an activator on the site and allows people to linger on the pier and actually enjoy the location. And just to close, from our perspective, this is a great improvement on the previous incarnation that's out of the site, and we're really excited to proceed with your proposal. Thank you.
Are there any questions?
Is the, is the little firehouse maybe being incorporated into the project, or is there any part of the space for the?
We're proposing to use that space as a restaurant within that building, for the building's working guidelines of how we can operate on the pier.
So the building stays and is incorporated. Do you want to talk about how the connections happen?
Sure. To give you the plans as well, which might be helpful. There's the site, there's a plaza in the area. I don't know if you can see it all, so. Top line? Top line? Okay. You see the entry, actually throughs along the side of the existing shed into the venue, which actually takes you all the way across the river towards downtown Manhattan. From within the restaurant, there's a door here on the side which takes you into hallway down around and then allows you to enter the restaurant here. The interior of the restaurant is just a sort of nineteen eighties subway shop.
Can you just talk about the material of the exterior surface of the wall of the kitchen?
You mean this wall or this side wall?
That side wall.
We're proposing to do a, I need to correct that. We're proposing to do a wood-clad diagonal. It would be sapphale, which is a kind of like mahogany, which bears really well in outdoor environments, painted to match the shed.
Any other questions? Okay, we'll take testimony and we'll come back to you. Thank you. Dory Gallo?
I am Dory Gallo and I am testifying on behalf of the Dumbo Neighborhood Alliance. The advocacy, I was referred to as D N A. The advocacy of the D N A led to the listing of the Dumbo Industrial Historic District being placed on the state and national registers in the year two thousand, and the Dumbo Historic District designated in two thousand and seven. New York City's ninety-fifth Historic District. D N A is the advocate for historic district and has been on the Brooklyn Bridge Community Advisory Council since it was formed in two thousand and ten. We have worked collaboratively with our adjacent waterfront historic districts for decades. Last Tuesday evening, the community saw this proposal for the first time, when it was presented at our monthly Brooklyn Bridge Park Community Advisory Council meeting. Over the years, D N A has been consistent with testifying against all new structures, whether temporary or permanent, under or in the view plane of the Brooklyn Bridge, and this proposal is no exception. In two thousand and seven, the Brooklyn Industrial Waterfront was listed on America's eleven most endangered historic places. Thank you, please look a savage, I will always be eternally grateful. Preservationists asserted that the manufacturing buildings on the waterfront were used for new purposes, yet the cold storage building was raised, and instead we now have a housing building in Brooklyn Bridge Park that rises thirty-five feet above the roadway of the Brooklyn Bridge, blocking the bridge as close as the promenade. According to Regina Meyer, the former president of Brooklyn Bridge Park, it cost us one million, one hundred thousand dollars to raise the purchased building, and the Landmark Preservation Commission approved that the purchased building be taken out of the Fulton Ferry Historic District, allowing it to be destroyed in order to open up the view plane. Would be disappointing for the L P C to now approve the new structure, and preservationists all over the city came out to support the retention of the purchased building, advocating for its adaptive reuse capabilities in the park. These buildings have value for the working waterfront, industrial retention in our immigrant history in New York City. The Fulton Ferry Pier opened in nineteen ninety-five, the original landing now part of Brooklyn Bridge Park. This is where Walt Whitman in his poem Crossing Brooklyn Ferry describes the experience of crossing the East River from Brooklyn to Manhattan just before sunset. The addition of this new building would dominate the open space of the pier and access to the river. There are already other concessions on this pier, and it's hard to fault original public space should remain open space. D N A has been supportive of this building as a concession and more suitable location in Brooklyn Bridge Park. We sincerely ask for your support to not approve any new structure, temporary or permanent at One Water Street. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Keith Gola for Katrina Adams.
Good morning. Katrina, unfortunately cannot be with you, but she had this testimony which I would like to read to you. As you might know, be familiar with Katrina Adams, architect, and she's been at Fulton Ferry Landing since nineteen seventy-two. She's also been a former president of the Fulton Ferry Landing Association. And as she has written here, "For the last forty years, the Fulton Ferry Landing Association has tirelessly been involved to foster development and building improvements in our designated historic neighborhood, to ensure that its history markers, the Fulton Ferry Landing Pier and its maiden structures are recognized and preserved. Placing a new permanent pavilion on the historic Landing Pier requires, therefore, very careful consideration." Now, in history, a symbol impeccable, detailed pier designed in nineteen ninety-four by landscape escape architect Sidney Nielsen was implemented, implemented, and the pier, as it now exists, was constructed in nineteen ninety-five. This was achieved with a full input and then spilled a small community with the people in the area. Several pier design schemes were presented. We chose a scheme that provided easy access to celebrate what was apparent at this important historic location, the unimpeed, extraordinary views of the world-renowned skyline, river the harbor, the Statue of Liberty and the icon of Brooklyn Bridge. And we chose this scheme because it accommodated what we envisioned for a Fulton Ferry Landing Pier, a fully accessible, flexible, cost and permit-free, unencumbered space that allowed passive and active activities initiated by pier users. New York Landmarks Conservancy in nineteen ninety-five awarded this planning effort by the Fulton Ferry residents under stewardship of Fulton Ferry Landing Association with the prestigious U C G U Moses Preservation Award. Placing proposed permanent pavilion structure for economic gain on this only unattached, much visited and well-vused existing pier in the park does diminish its history and its location and does obstruct the unencumbered public use for the many activities that you have not noticed on the piers, such as resting, acting, taking photographs and even getting married. The plan of the pavilion location, size, its architectural designs and building materials totally ignore the blown-by setting and design of the historic Far Boat House and the pier's base. Absorbing the shed into the structure of the plan of the pavilion obliterates the delicate relationship that exists between the shed and the Far Boat House. The importance of Fulton Ferry Landing and its adjoining historic structures are inappropriate and only for economic gain, and we therefore respect, request respect and admission not to support this application. And thank you so much, as Katrina might have said personally, for considering your view. Thank you.
Thank you. Chris Martin?
I'm Chris Martin from the Dumbo Regiment District. I'll also be reading some testimony on behalf of Linda Kate at the Downtown Brooklyn Partnership. So from the Dumbo Regiment District, "We are dedicated to the vitality and amazing waterfront community. Thank you very much for the opportunity for me to speak today in favor of this proposal at Fulton Ferry for the Fulton Ferry Landing concession. We believe the concession provides an important amenity for the neighborhood in the park. Waterfront dining options are in high demand and also provide important resources for the park operations. The design of the building and the concession is simple, light, airy and reminiscent of our beautiful James Carousel Pavilion, and will be, and will be a lovely way for many to linger and experience this spectacular view of the Brooklyn Bridge and waterfront. We know the aesthetic of it because brothers have believed that they, they will be respectful to the context and their details and thoughtfully design and operate this experience for neighbors and visitors alike. Their boat on Pier Six adds to the visual richness of that part of Brooklyn Bridge Park, and we believe this concession has, has that opportunity as well for the pier at Fulton Ferry Landing. Thank you very much for your consideration. We urge you to approve this application." And then on behalf of Linda Kate, so Linda Kate was the former, she's the senior vice president of Public Affairs at the Downtown Brooklyn Partnership and formerly the VP of Strategic Partnership at Brooklyn Bridge Park. She wishes to express her support for the Fulton Ferry Landing concession under review today, and this support stems from her experience with the operators and from the familiarity of the park, its operations and its programs. Linda had the opportunity to work with the operators of the concession over several years, several years, and found them to be responsive, reliable and great supporters of the community. The park has made a sound decision expanding its partnership and is a win for the park visitors. In terms of the structure associated with the concession, it is worth noting that it was previously permitted at, what was previously permitted at those locations, a large unsightly tent that did not relate at all to its environment, aesthetically or chromatically, and offered little value for the park, the park visitor. The proposed structure is a vast improvement. It's sympathetic to the park, the adjacent historic structures and to the Brooklyn Bridge area. Its partnering of utility with relative transparency will allow the public to further enjoy this wonderful location without competing views and without the, without the strategy commercial tone that has been prevalent here for years. She asked for your approval of what will be a fine addition to the park and wonderful amenity for thousands of park visitors. Thank you.
Thank you. Jesse Geno?
Jesse Geno from Historic Historic District Council. This is a peculiar proposal about the introduction of existing store issues more than design concerns. To begin with, H D C does not object to the design of this proposed restaurant pavilion in any of itself. However, we would greatly object to where it's proposed to be placed. The current study proposes to introduce a new permanent structure that would further reduce the corridors of Brooklyn Bridge and add to the further recreation of commercial disguises within this public space. The nineteen seventy-seven Fulton Ferry Historic Historic Destination Report calls some of that to be used as a means of preserving these manifestations of the city's maritime heritage, and time has proven the fact is to be an effective means of doing so. Though the outbuilding has been reconstructed, it still effectively evokes the nineteen twenty-nine old shed and its simply curricular in character, which would be compromised by the proposed restaurant pavilion. The Destination Report also specifically identifies the Brooklyn Bridge as historic and completely full on the annihilation of writers, artists, artists and the public at large. New solidifies the structure competing displays of the bridge, an iconic landmark to roll over, would contradict any preservation purpose. Remember that this is right next to the site where the Landmark Preservation Commission committed the demolition of the handsome W three A R apartment purchase building in order to create views of the bridge itself and facilitate the traffic flow in the greater park. But the L P C now signed that more permanent masses obstructing even smaller charred choke line in the park would be appropriate. We ask that this proposal be reconsidered and reconsidered. Thank you.
Thank you. Krista Belbo?
Krista Belbo of the Society for the Architecture of the City. This is an absolutely unique public space, renovated by public use most recently in nineteen ninety-five, and beloved by landscape architect Sidney Nielsen, who is also president of the Public Design Commission. The space commenced through the use, including another, other New York City landmarks nearby, the great stonework of the Brooklyn Bridge, the South Street Seaport across the river, then the skyline of Old Manhattan, two and views looking far out into New York Harbor. The open space here is well-used, as documented by a series of photos submitted to you last Friday by the Fulton Ferry Landing Association. That there should be a plan to commodify this peaceful public space by building concession, a large, bright, white, enclosed bar restaurant with no architectural distinction, grizzling with barstools, is the sad indicator of the decline of New York City as metropolis, transforming the designated old shed under the pretext that it has been repaired and so is mattered, making it the star of billboard and backhouse space that handled garbage from the bar and perhaps microwave the small plates, while blocking the view of Marine Fire Station from the water and from the pier. This is totally unacceptable. It is a proposal that should never come this far. If the Historic District is to retain the character that good storage should in the past has enhanced, this concession should be rejected or failing that, separated from the old shed, relocated, reduced to less than half of its present volume, and treated as a seasonal temporary extension. Peace and quiet are not in the excels to be protected by Landmark Commission, but a special sense of place is a virtue of the city. Not every corner of New York needs to become ordinary and vibrant.
Thank you. Will Stein?
My name is Will Stein. I'm the president of Fulton Ferry for almost two decades and I was on board of the Fulton Ferry Landing Association. Regarding the permanent pavilion structure at Fulton Ferry Landing, this pier was renovated in nineteen ninety-five specifically as an open space to visit, view the river, the bridge and the skyline, and then to bar. It was certainly not meant to house a bar slash restaurant in a structure in the middle of the open space, a structure that obscures and disrespects the historic Fire Boat House, especially when viewed from the passing ferries and pleasure craft. The applicant and Brooklyn Bridge Park Corporation have aired a negative comparison to the tent which was previously on this site as the starting basis for their pursuit upgrade. The pier was previously under the control of the New York City EDC, and under that arrangement, the tents did not have to be submitted to Landmarks for approval, and the community by extension had no opportunity for opposition. The correct comparison to make is how Fulton Ferry Landing appeared from nineteen ninety-five to about two thousand and eight, before the tent was installed. The space was open during that period and should remain open today. I also would like to add that Community Board Two, as you know, did not forward a recommendation on this item. They invoked, they took a big committee to approve, failed to pass. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak on this application? Okay, so as was stated, we have a letter from the, from Brooklyn Community Board Two saying that they were unable to reach the determination, the committee did not have enough information to take a position. We also have received written comments from two individuals in opposition. So would you like to respond to the comments? And I think one of the things that would be interesting to hear about, I think, your response is whether in the nineteen ninety-four planning effort, there were ever concessions and vision here, but then also sort of focus on the issues that were raised in testimony, such as the location, size and the impact on the views and the relationship to the fire.
My name is David Law and I'm the executive vice president at Brooklyn Bridge Park. I can't comment about the original design of Fulton Ferry Landing, whether there were any intention for concessions. I don't have any information about that. I do want to, I did want to respond to two of the comments that were made. I did want to respond to two of the comments that were made. One was the repeated description of the building as a permanent structure. It is in fact a kind of pre-grad structure that is going to be lifted into place and connected to the depth and our lease, our license or anything with the concession airs. They are too removed at one time, so it's not currently changed, or just a little change. The other thing I wanted to comment on was the comparison of this structure to the purchased building. I'm not sure how many of the current commissioners were on the mission when the demolition of the purchased building was demolished, but the discussion considered in that essence was the purchased building is actually probably almost 1,000 feet from notices. It's not immediately adjacent, and that is located directly under the Brooklyn Bridge. And the reason that that was demolished was that it basically created a choke point in the connection of the southern point of the park to the northern part of the park. So it did very much block views from kind of the end of Old Fulton Street as you docked the Brooklyn Bridge. That was a two-story building. It was a pretty glass building and those are the footprints, probably four to five times the footprint of this structure that we're dealing with today. In addition, the location of this building is behind the historic fireball station. So when you're coming down, down the Brooklyn Bridge, Old Fulton Street, you will not, this is not further impacting the views of the Brooklyn Bridge. This is behind a two-story fireball, as well as, as I think as Alex mentioned, his presentation is, as you can see from the renderings, is a very light, narrow structure that is designed to allow both views over it as it's already a tall, and both through it as a substantial structure. And we take the visual impact. Obviously, the whole point of our Brooklyn Bridge Park is to create places where people can directly, with their use of Brooklyn Bridge. And we take the impact on using the Brooklyn Bridge very seriously and work on how we can achieve the consequences we have gone forward with that.
Does anyone else have any questions? I just have one last question, and that was about the choice of colors, the bright white versus something.
We selected white, one to match the existing structures on the Fulton Ferry Landing, including firehouse itself and the existing shed. We thought that a different, making it a different color would make it too much of a contrast that brought attention to itself, and we thought of white as a kind of neutral color that can affect the shirt going into the background.
Okay, thank you. Yes, Jean. Yeah, this question is for you as well. So there are two service windows there.
Yes.
So does that mean this is essentially a takeout situation where you go to the window and you...
This is not a take... Oh, you mean on the interior of the building?
On the interior, yeah. How is the...
No, so that would be for the waitstaff that worked in the venue. So patrons would sit at the chairs around the perimeter, the chairs and tables around the perimeter, or at the bar, and a server would take an order and go to the service window and pick up the order.
So you're not ordering food and sitting outside.
All food.
It's all connected just to the structure. Okay.
Michael? Is your placement size configuration limited by any other factor than your design choices and the size of the venue you want to do? In other words, are there particular setbacks or minimums or anything that's governing the placement for this? The park may be the best consideration.
There are a couple of concerns regarding how we determine the footprint of the building. Specifically, the footprint of the previous establishment that was upon the site is effectively the same but shifted by a couple of feet from the previous iteration to open up the pathway on the northern side of the building. And we also attempted to make the center line of the building in line so that you walk, as you walk down by the fire reservation, you actually enter the center path of the building. And we're limited by the space that Brooklyn Bridge Park allotted for the concession. So it's the same size as the previous concession and shifted by just a couple of feet.
I understand that. In the RFP that we issued that led to this concession, we had indicated that to have a previous concession at the site, and we had indicated that the size of that concession was about 1,200 square feet, and that we, as the park, limited the size of the new concession to be in line with that size and location. We were very concerned with access around the concession so people could still get out to the landings and water. I mean, given the dimensions of this and how it compared to the, what had been previous concession, we were confident there's sufficient walk space on both the northern and south sides to get to that. And also, there's people to stand and take a view to the west of the concession.
Yeah, a question too. What happened to the boat that is not part of the LPC review? But how was that going to be viewed?
The fireboat will be a seasonal tenant of the Bridge Park, and it will dock on the north side of the pier and it will operate as a bar with a walk-up sweep window for construction alone, but sorry.
Sorry, one more thing. The enclosure of the ramp, is there an elevation of that?
The enclosure of the which?
North side. Right, is there a north side elevation?
I believe that there is, unless there were pages on it, but there is. Here you are.
All right, so the ramp is enclosed by a solid wall that's pretty much ten feet high to one of us.
Correct.
Sarah?
Yes, Diane. Could you explain which one of the suggestions from the comments from the testimony was that the building should be separated, but let's say in effect the kitchen would be separated from the bathrooms? And it's not clear if it would be possible to do that in some way, so the building is screened still in the original building. So that was my question. Just sorry, following on my question, which is if the kitchen building you cited was somewhere a little bit either forward. Obviously, if you cited on one side and lower and then to the south, then you would end up with views potentially more. Perhaps it could be a couple feet closer to the water. The question is, is that possible? What are the issues involved with that?
Just so I understand your question more clearly, were you referring to the kitchen building, are you referring to the enclosed food production area or the entire building?
I think the connection between the chef and the chef.
Yeah, yeah. In other words, is it possible to separate the existing building from the new structure construction or not? And if not, what are the issues?
Well, the primary, well, there's two primary reasons.
Maybe you should go back to the question.
Sure, I'm gonna take it back to you. There are two primary reasons why these are connected. One is that the request of Brooklyn Bridge Park that we keep the concession closer to the shed. And David can speak to that concern. And the second is that if we were to operate in the winter, we need to physically connect the space between the bathrooms and the interior of the venue, or else we'll have to send people outside into the elements to wash and dry.
It would help me squeeze it in.
Yes, it would be in the winter.
It would be. And we had asked, we had actually had this discussion during the design process of whether there should be this space between the shed or not. And we at the park had pushed them not to create that space for two reasons. One is if they're going to move the shed out, we're taking the whole footprint of the structure, and you're moving it closer to the water, and you're compromising the big wide open space to the west of the concession, which people still use as a lookout point to take waiting photos and things like that. And we didn't want to make that space any smaller than it already had been, given the existing space. It's a very relevant space, and we didn't want it to feel cramped. The other thing was, logistically, we felt that any space between the dining pavilion and the existing utility shed, we kind of need that space, and we worried about it becoming, it wouldn't be a great visibility in there. We were worried about the big safety issues as well. So we felt that it was best, given those concerns as well as the concern Alex mentioned, which is a logical concern with keeping people within one facility. We thought it was best to bring it closer. And as previously I mentioned, that shed doesn't have this specific historic fabric that has been rebuilt several times, and so we didn't feel that that was a big issue.
Any other questions? Commander, if you'd like to close the hearing. All right, favor? All right, so I think this is an interesting discussion that we have as a commission. Certainly approved structures on other piers under our jurisdiction, I think recognizing the dynamic working waterfront and the years had buildings on them and were, should be very active, very purposeful working waterfronts and type of activity. And so we approved a double infrastructure on piers of Dean and was Pier 17. So this site is a little different in that in 1994, it had this planning effort that was called for over quality. And so we don't know if the concession, the idea of concessions was ever entertained in that planning effort, but there has been a concession here at least for 10 years. So a little more than 10 years after the 1995 development of this pier. So there's been a concession a long time. And so I think our discussions will probably focus on location and materials, color, and size, but also the nature of the design, if it feels permanent, if it feels open, airy, or impermanent, compared to testimony that it was protracted and lifted on and would be removed, but also will be heated. So that's maybe some considerations in terms of thinking about this as a temporary type of structure. So with that, I guess I'll think, turn it over to Brett.
I start. I walk here every morning. I walk here this morning. It's fun to come on over to fifty years of this area, the most iconic, one spot in all of the city. Maybe Central Park used to be, but it's looking south, it's changed. Congratulations first of all to the great success that you all have had at Hyland and Gorge Island, both of which I enjoy visiting and think is really appropriate. I enjoyed and related and agree with your philosophy of adding it all. I think you have a very good model, not so very far away, from the well-provided extraordinary pavilion, which is appropriate. But I'm not going to stay within the confines of the bounds that our chair has just related, maybe others will, but I have another kind of history here and another kind of belief in what this space is. And I'll just have to say, I think nothing is appropriate here, nothing at all, except the little building and some sort of an adaptive reuse and maybe very minor changes to that. And I think this sketch shows it as well as any, but they all show it. This compromises all sorts of extraordinary, unique worldviews of our city that simply cannot be reconciled, in my judgment. It is now, as it is, way too crowded. You say a few wedding parties, yes, but there are just too many other people who would like to be here, and they can't because they're crowded out of this extraordinary space that Sydney created. I don't know what your thoughts were, and I don't think they really matter right now to us, but this is our problem and our issue to deal with. But I think the openness of this space is, to me, sacrosanct. And since it's been brought up and thought about it, the purchased building, way, way, way before I was on this commission, but sometime after I had been president of the Brooklyn Heights Association for a number of years, this is not Brooklyn Heights, but we viewed it as an important area to be concerned with at that time, and very soon after, I think, it was, I moved the largest building ever moved in New York City, the Empire Theater on Forty Second Street. I suggested, in the debate about the purchased building, that it could be moved, it could be moved to a finger pier, which we had plenty of at that time. The entirety of the park had not been completely formed at that point, and I felt the building could be moved, not torn down. But I did believe strongly that it should be removed from this extraordinary space to open up the space, the views well up the wall. So I supported the idea of removing the building but not necessarily tearing it down, just for a little fact. So believing that this space is so important for the view and for public open space, not to be crowded with more restaurants, goodness knows, we don't need more restaurants right now down here. There are about 50 choices within hundreds of feet at this point. It's an extraordinarily exciting, wonderful place, but yet another way to make this waterfront viable is not what's needed. The clue I was asking for me was hearing what would happen to the boat. The boat is simply another restaurant. That's great. Keep it on the boat, don't keep it on this land.
I agree with every word of the press. Now, there's Jeanie? Diane?
Certainly respecting, if I had to say, I'm concerned about open space and the new corridors. I saw it's a very, you know, transparent building and that many of the structures have been built on this, in this area in the past. So historically, it's not been necessarily perceived as open space, and that people could go in front of the structure, that you can see through the structure, you can see from the structure, because it is transparent. But it does obviously have some, you know, it does impact some of the corridors. And it's not a very big structure of them, but in comparison to some of the buildings that have been here in the past, I don't know if you can use that word, but I'd like to hear what everybody's got to say. It's, you know, it is a significant space.
I just, can we turn to page 15, just to understand the point that Greg was making? Just for us people. It's in my, wait a minute. I didn't have my glasses on. Third, okay. So that, that's what for this conversation. And I think, I mean, I sort of agree with Diane. I think that there's, you know, certainly from a historic perspective, there were lots of buildings on these waterfronts and other types of structures. And so I think, and I think there's been a history of concession here. So I think that some structure can be appropriate, and I do think there's a question about, you know, it is designed, it approaches to be transparent and to see through it and capture views, but I think that, you know, we can still look and think about the height of it, the finish of it, the thickness of the members, the footprint of the ship in and the location of it. Michael?
Yeah, I feel as a worker, very strongly in agreement with what Greg said, but I'm struggling with, trying to think in my mind, how that keys into the landmark appropriateness of the site relative to the standards that we normally apply. Now, I think that the way to do it, or at least what I would suggest that we could think about is that the, the space as it's now, as it now exists, it's very open, it has this dumpy little shed on it that has minimal sort of value perhaps, but it exists as an open or walk space at the end of the street overlooking water. And I think that, looking at the sort of photos and the many variations that this space has had, I think that what it recalls for me is... I think that what it recalls for me is the earliest state where, when it was, a rural area that had an open space, it's small, normal structures at the bottom. And that was just kind of there as an open space at the foot of the street. And I think that if we're going to argue for a more firm response in line with what Fred said, I think that we have to find a way to key it into the historic appropriateness argument. And I think that, looking at the space, its history, especially in its current context, having it have the feel of a ferry landing, of an open space at the, you know, at the foot of a major artery, has merit and has an historical basis. I would say that I too could consider a structure here, personally. I think that the one that we have here causes me concern. I think that the earlier structure was acceptable because it was truly, truly a temporary structure in the nature of its construction, and that was very apparent, and you saw it. This, while it will be lifted and placed as a modular structure, I don't think that the building, pardon my malice, can be considered as a temporary structure. It's planned for use every day of the year. And it's certainly suitable for use every day of the year. I also think that the, looking at, again, the history of structures on this site, it seems to me that the technology is one of kind of small, separate, informal buildings that arise as the need, I'm sorry, that are built to be rugged. And I think that by extending this little shed, it's kind of making a mountain out of a molehill. It's supposed to be a modest utilitarian structure. By kind of turning it into this ensemble, I think that it makes a bit too much of it. I think that the, if there isn't going to be something here, it should be something that is temporary, both in practical use and with peers. And I think it should be much more light. This is pretty darn light, as most things go, but it's got a solid roof. It's got, you know, when you look at the renderings with the doors down, which it will be its condition for the majority of the year, it's not exactly as transparent as it could be. And I think the connection to the existing structure makes it more massive. I think that the materiality and location should be looked at. I think the choice of white, as you highlighted, is quite problematic. I would say that if there's going to be siding, it should be much more like the decking or kind of darting, letting into the natural wood of the deck, make it go away. And I think there is a significant problem with the north side where the rammed closure blocks and kind of gloms onto the small shed. I mean, this is a place, if you're going to put something here, it should look as light and simple and, you know, but... Yeah, as dumb as the shed. You know, it's just a utilitarian structure that doesn't interrupt your eye, it doesn't interrupt your flow down the street and out into the water. It should be very, very light, and I don't think this is the case.
I would add that just adds about, I agree, a hundred percent. And I think it, I want to step back and just talk about Brooklyn Bridge Park in general. It's amazing and has been an incredible addition to the neighborhood, to the borough, and to the city. I mean, people's access to public open space and parklands and recreation or facilities is incredible for Brooklyn Bridge Park. And it's, you know, it's, the experience can be great. Also can be quite challenging because it's so good that it's incredibly crowded and it can be very uncomfortable, much like the Hyland, actually. People go to the Hyland or the Park at the right time. So this project gives me a little pause because it, you know, this, this pier as it stands right now, even though it gets a lot of traffic, it also gives you an opportunity to sort of have this, it's personal experience, it's visual experience with, you know, Manhattan and what's surrounding you. So, and this, so, number one, I'm personally afraid of this area's getting over, even more overgrown. And number two, just in terms of the structure, I happen to agree that it's, it's present, it's too solid of a presence. And both in terms of its firm, because of its firmness and also because of the structure itself. I think, you know, the South Street sequel has, the developer has done a pretty good job working with temporary structures, both during the summer and the winter. And a lot of them, it's a real simple view, the way they've laid them out, has, you know, has been able to still retain this experience of whiteness and openness, but also deliver services and activities to the people who come there. I would recommend exploring this a little further, and that being... Diana?
I think I haven't heard, took a few points on falling in the thread and hiding camp of, I think probably nothing is appropriate here. It's already a very, it's a pitch point. I feel like this is developed as a restaurant, I'm a New York politician. It's sort of the privatization of the public space as well, if there's... Maybe not a part of our review, but this is rare.
I know, I think that there are instincts that we all have that are kind of way outside of the general sort of appropriateness. So thinking about some of my comments about why it's inappropriate from a historical perspective and how our instinct as a user of the park.
Well, I started thinking that maybe a possibility is that the fireport concession might be to move this closer to the fireboat concession away from there, where you'd have the views and to look at, to see if there's some way to design it where it can have it towards and just to the east or something. So it's really not interrupting the views or so much the circulation. That might be a possibility there.
I was thinking something more transparent also. And remembering when I had taken my children here, I guess fifteen years ago. And we were really upset that there was nothing there. And it was, you know, living towards the falls. So I can see how people do need some amenities, or need a bathroom, or need some amenities placed. But if there's a way to make it a little wider and a little more packed, maybe, so that this can actually see more view. I'm not sure that's the best angle that we're taking this picture from, because I think that's the angle where you'd have the most blockage of the view. And if you did it from the side, you probably wouldn't have as much. So the same from a different angle, I think that's the most beautiful, actually.
Okay, so I think where we are is, we don't have the ghost group anything today. John?
I just wanted to check in on two things. One is that I do, I agree with Fred's position entirely. And on top of that, there's, for me, there's the question of whether the whole shed matters or doesn't. Because it does matter. In addition to all ports currently, we have this question of whether we should be wrapping this building on two sides and hiding it, and would we allow that anywhere for, I think, SPOs if we agree equally. And to, you know, if you want to take a look at what other perspectives are, there's also the perspective coming from the water, which is equally valuable. And we concern ourselves with, we looked at the Dora Trigger Building, and we obviously cared a lot about what the point of view was. The whole shed is effectively gone with, from that point of view, if you're looking at it from the water side. So I'm just adding that as a note. And maybe that, you know, because it was reconstructed, our conclusion is, it doesn't matter, or fair enough. Why I think it does, because I think we just, the whole point, the nature of the reconstruction and all the material they put into the traditions has been, what we required about it, suggests that it actually doesn't matter, not that it doesn't.
So I think that, understanding that you prefer, or actually feel that there should be nothing, but I think you raise some good points, even if one does consider something. So I think we're, you know, we're split. We have some people who would like to say nothing on the pier. And then there are others who think that there is a sort of basis for a structure on the pier, but concerns about the connection to the shed and the, perhaps, location size and the transparency or permanent nature of the design. So I think we won't take any action today. I'll have you work with our Cory and our team, and we'll have you think about some of these comments and have you come back and give some replies, if you're so. Okay, thank you. Yeah, so we're going to take class now, and we'll come back in ten after two.
Alright, commissioners, we're going to start up today's afternoon session, starting with proposal number two, obviously, one nine dash three four five one five, an application for a certificate of appropriateness in the borough of Manhattan. Block two and nine, block thirty-five, two seventy-five Canal Street, and so past time, historic district extension. Queen Anne's House, core building designed by Charles P. in 1978. The application is to establish a master plan regarding the future installation of paint and wall signs.
Good afternoon, Commissioner, each child should be brought in for preservation staff. The application for you is two hundred and seventy-five Canal Street, which is located between Broadway and Montferrier Street in the Silvercast Iron Historic District Extension. The application is to attain a master plan for painted wall sign on secondary elevation for a time period of ten years. The proposed master plan will be set back five feet from the primary elevation, and it will have a solid color border that measures two inches.
Yeah, commissioners, just to add a couple notes on this particular application. I think most of you were here or were aware of, a few weeks ago, the staff presented an assessment of prior master plan installations, that we've had over the years. We had a kind of robust discussion about that, after making a few observations and suggestions. And so this presentation today, this proposal, actually is the first to request that very scenario where we would no longer be regulating specific percentage requirements for the graphics, no longer regulating the colors that are selected in terms of percentages, the text versus graphics, any of those things. Again, as a result of some of those suggestions and the discussion that followed. So just to recap that very briefly, as it stands today, all of the master plans that we approved over the last ten or so years, have been based off specific coverage percentages for graphic or thermal realistic conditions, have a solid background. And when we started to assess those and how they really turned out, it appeared to us that many of those signs seemed not to apply, but in fact they did, because the sign installers were using pencil counts and other means of making the work comply with the specific criteria. Things like the background color being mixed into the graphic of the logo itself, and where does one start and one stop? Examples of very faint clouds on an otherwise blue background, where is actually the background there? So we went through that with all of you a few weeks ago, and I think the commissioners are very interested in the topic. And if not interested, at least some were, were actually supportive of this idea of sort of letting go of the very specific regulation based off of percentage requirements. So this, again, is the first presentation that you've seen that's going to ask for that to be incorporated into this particular master plan. The only thing that staff had suggested that they actually are not asking for, asking for a different, has to be with the border. They're proposing a very small two-inch border with the ability to do any color on that border. And I believe as long as it contrasts, and staff have recommended that all borders be at least six inches, and could be wider than that, and using either black or white, based off the tradition of the painted wall signs and also as a sort of a set part, deciding from whatever the condition of the wall was around it. That's the proposal today.
Cory, is the percentage of this, the sign on the overall visible surface of the area smaller than is usually the likelihood?
In this case, because there's a historic ghost sign, it's still under twenty percent. I'm not sure if it's significantly smaller than that as a result of asking for the less regulation on the content. But in this case, because there is the model of the historic ghost sign, which is actually still on the wall, that might be a reason to think of this one slightly differently.
And the commissioners should also note that this one slide shows prior master plan criteria, but it has been revised, so your hard copies are accurate. Sharon Paulson, PKSC Architects, and my affairs commander, Kelly, who's from my office, who has done all very careful work responding to a lot of comments and questions from staff. And I want to thank the staff, because when this project was calendered, I got a flurry of phone calls saying, you need to watch the video of this discussion and understand what the concerns are. So we have modified the proposal slightly from what we presented to community board two. So just to go through this, up here, you can see, this is the West Basin Mall, and there is currently a ghost sign. Not much of that ghost sign will remain, because we are in the process of doing the restoration work of that wall as part of the certificate of no effect that was issued for this building a bit ago. And lots of peanut peanuts. And so what we did was, of course, researchers went into historic photos, and we found that initially, there was a significantly larger sign on the side of the building, and that the sign has changed over time to be the one that's there today, which mixes lettering and the graphic of a mortar and pestle. This was for a pharmacy. Not known whether it was actually in the building or not. And the required sort of other street signs around, and the drawing indicating the existing sign and where it's located. It is right at the edge of the building and extends back. And our proposal is to push it further in. The square footage of the new sign would be thirteen point six percent of the visible wall area. And we, is the elevation of the existing. And the proposed, and the dashed red line represents our best approximation of the maximum visible wall area, which is a view taken from several blocks away, because this is sitting over the building in the corner of Broadway and Canal, which is a two-story building, much lower. So this entire wall is exposed, but the red line represents pretty much what we can see. And it's paint. It's not plumbed, it's not illuminated. And what we illustrated was something that represented a base of what the previous guidelines had recommended for top face and breadth.
And I noticed the tag is inside the box, right?
Yes, we were asked to include the vendor plaque, and my response was, what is that? We, I mean, all the painted wall signs that we've done, the vendors have not asked to include a plaque. So we figured, because this is sort of so close to the roof area, adding a plaque below, we're not really doing anything for a vendor, so we included it in the visible portion of the sign. And we are, we are open to color and width of the border up. That's what the owner wants, is to have a sign and master plan.
Alright, any other questions? So is there anyone who'd like to speak on this application? We do have a resolution from community board...
All right, any other questions? So is there anyone who'd like to speak on this application? We do have a resolution from community board two that recommends approval of the application, provided that the lab work staff ensures that the master plan design and each individual design conforms to the applicable guidelines. So are there other questions? Who's listening? All on paper?
Mine.
So, I'll answer.
I think this is appropriate. I mean, I have Michael ask the other leader, what was it we were talking about? I think some of these ghost signs are being documented.
Documented.
And since they are, these documents themselves go into a file here.
They do.
So there is a way, we've approved the signs here before? Or is this written?
Everybody agree and okay with the flexibility on the content? Great. So, Kim? On the border, so as per your, you are fine with the border? Others?
Yep.
Okay.
In the matter of 275 Canal Street, Soho past time Historic District Extension, from a type certificate of appropriateness. A Queen Anne's House store building designed by Charles Hyde and built in 1878. Application is to establish a master plan governing the future installation of painted wall signs. I note that the building's style, scale, materials, and details are among the features that contribute to the special architectural historic character of the Soho Cast Iron Historic District Extension. I recommend approval with modifications, finding that the historic... No modifications. I recommend approval, finding that the historic precedent for painted signage at the same location as documented in historic photograph and ghost sign, that the painted application of the sign will be in keeping with the traditional application methods and commercial character of painted wall signs historically found in buildings within historic district. That the sign will be at an undeveloped secondary elevation and set back five feet from the primary elevation. That the sign will occupy less than 15% of the visible wall area. Will be in keeping with painted wall signs historically found in the building and elsewhere in historic district in terms of size. That the combination of the placement and size of the sign will help it remains subordinate to the presence of the building and within the street state, regardless of the type of grasses or number of colors used within the body of the sign. That the sign will include a solid painted border, a typical feature of the store signs. And that the master plan will be valid for a period of 10 years, and the applicant will document every sign approved under the master plan, so there will be a record for the commission to consider when reviewing the effectiveness of the master plan. Right, Sherri?
All on paper?
Just to sort of clear on record, there's a unique tag included inside the sign.
And that the unique tag from the vendor is included within the sign area.
All on paper? Any opposed?
Approved. Thank you. And just an update on the rest of the building restoration. We're getting very close.
Okay, moving on to your item number three. This is LPC 19-2573, an application for a certificate of appropriateness in the borough of Manhattan, block 46, block 11. In accordance with research on the K 134 to 136 Spring Street in the Soho past time Historic District. Lord Style, Urban Tile Exchange, where new design by Alters Wagner and built in 1946. The application is to alter its layout.
Ladies and preservation staff, the application before you is 84th and the Booster Street, AKA 134 to 136 Spring Street, located in the Soho Cast Iron Historic District. This is a building which is subject to a special permit for modification of use from 1944. This is an L-shaped building with façades on both Spring Street here and Booster Street on the side. We will be looking at the proposal for changes on the ground floor of the Booster Street side. Here are our 1940s cast load and decoration code for both showing the Booster Street facade. And the proposal is to remove the upper portion of the wood panel bulkhead here, lowering the existing cast iron sills at these two bays, and installing a new wood sill at the southernmost end where no cast iron sill currently exists, as well as installing larger display windows. The detail and finished color of the cast iron sill will be replicated at the wood sill. And here are the existing and proposed elevations. The applicants are here to answer any questions. Thank you.
Yes.
Were the wood nails in question historic? What's their position?
They would have historic.
When do you think they're added?
It's unclear.
Stand with me after this date. You can see some of these 40s cast loads. They're painted panel, they're painted boards. We went up and looked at them very closely. They are, they have very little thin layer of paint, and the trim is not like a real recess panel. It's just kind of an applied paint. It looks like it's not historic. It might be a replacement, though, without a panel.
Are there any other questions? Do you think Cory would testify? Billy Carroll?
Billy Carroll, Historic District Council. HDC finds this proposal generally appropriate. However, it would be even more desirable to replicate the sill on the far right made in cast iron, the durable signature material of this historic district, rather than recreating it in wood. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak on this application? We have a resolution from community board two recommending approval. Would you like to respond to the comments that were made about the painting of the sill in cast iron?
Sure.
Put some front and see examples.
Sure. My name is Daniel Silver. I work with the Order of Property or Design. The area of the question is there on the door. The reason for wood is particularly cast iron to replicate the actual cast iron process. It's expensive and possibly a bit of a challenge to find people who do a small pay like that. Another concern as well is we were thinking wood for some other materials that's a bit softer than we think available. Because we can kind of replicate the age look of the cast iron that is existing with the rest of the kind of three bays there. Doing new cast iron pieces now, it won't look the same like it was the paint or anything else, but we can sort of reverse engineer the way it looks now replicating it much easier in sort of a modern way using technology. So that's the reason that we're wanting to do it with.
Did you explore the... I know you said it's more expensive. I don't know if you actually spoke to any companies because sometimes they have casts already made.
Yeah, so we did, there's a few up in the Hudson Valley, the Tower Studios, and we worked with the Bashford Casting. The pattern that is used there is kind of particular to this building, so there isn't a kind of a floral match that you'd be able to use. So we would have to... So nothing is, sort of exists, that's the kind of dimension of the size that we need. So we would be required to draft this, essentially put together a pretty drawing of those details, have somebody make some mold. The way they do is they put the mold into like a sandcast, and then order the cast iron, and then you get, you know, set piece. So if we were to take that kind of design and cut it, steam seal it, it's very sharp. And so when they cast it, it's sharp. That's somebody's ability to work when they had that 100 or 20 years ago. And so the layers of paint kind of add that little like, the kind of thickness and chunkiness that exists. So the goal is to replicate it in a way that is similar in kind to what's there and not have something that kind of stands out as being kind of like you put in a new brick and a whole new building that looks like it's a brand new piece that doesn't fit. You want to avoid that. You want this kind of transition so that the facade be sort of unnoticed.
And there's no cast iron there now, so...
Yeah, there's no cast iron there on that one, whereas number four, but those two bays do have that.
Any other questions? Okay, so I think we'll have a motion goes here. Thank you.
One second.
All on paper? Come on. Okay, so would anyone like to start on this?
There's one thing that sort of bothers me and I have a very much fancy. The white cross pieces were offered again. To me are very jarring because I think the original was framed in a dark color in general. You've got the descending tiers of kind of down, kind of ornate one to match up your building. But I think especially in the arm of the book, that white color is very...
Maybe we go to the proposed proposal?
It's just clean.
Yeah, and in some ways, well, I suppose whatever you replace the sill at, you can save that homework and try to get the sill as a cast iron, but that's really painted. So... You know, I think that lots of times with the big cast iron elements, they were painted to look like so. Sometimes when we see these smaller pieces of cast iron that were really cast, they were actually a kind of darker color. So not necessarily that it's... The contrast is... Oh, there's Phil. Phil, about the wood sill, does it replace any cast iron? Could replicate the appearance, would be that all?
I guess I feel like if you're going to go to the trouble of replicating, you know, I still do it in cast iron. It's not that, you know, it's not all the time. I just did 300 of them with cast iron pens. And to make range where the fence was deteriorated, there are good companies here in New York. So that would be my thought. And I appreciate what Diana said about the body. I do think it's a little odd.
I mean, I think this building was the subject of a special permit. So it first is, is that restoration was held to be very high standard, so it seems like, you know, that material is consistent with the special permit history on this building. All right, so I think they have consensus to improve with cast iron, with the sill. And I think just maybe you could work with the staff to tell them there wouldn't be such a contrast in the colors. And so they open about the colors that you choose, but work on a little bit less contrast. Okay. So, Michael, it's you.
Regarding 84, 84 Booster Street, also known as 134 East Spring Street in Soho Cast Iron Historic District. Application is to alter storefronts. I note that the building's house materials and accessories that contribute to the style of the star character in Soho Cast Iron Historic District. I recommend approval with modifications, finding that under Booster Street the south, all the historic painted wall signs feature big platform stairs which move prior to designation of the historic district and remain composition panels set between display windows and decorative windows. It's not so characteristic of the building. The display windows and wood panels below them are significantly designed as exterior pattern models meant for therefore. There are worn out amenities in the historic fabric. Their existing cast iron sills be retained and missing one replaced with a new sill, matching the historic sill in terms of size and else. The application would be on the proposal base if we proposed all these properties to over cast iron cells in the annual organization, proportional relationships, better for the building's visualization type and more natural position on Spring Street beside the building. And for a finish special attention on historic American store in Soho Cast Iron Historic District. However, I recommend that the replacement of certain cast iron and the applicant's full adjustments to the color of the cast iron elements.
All on paper? All on paper? Any opposed? It's approved with that modification.
Next up is item number four. This is LPC 19-26058, an application for a certificate of appropriateness in the borough of Manhattan, block 1144, block 9. 159 West 72nd Street, Upper West Side, Central Park District Historic District. A modern style commercial building design was built in 1972 to 73, and the application is to install signage.
Good afternoon, commissioners. Brian Blaisen, Preservation Staff. I will be presenting this proposal for the replacement of signage of a nonhistoric building constructed circa 1972. The applicant is available at the presentation to answer any questions you may have. The subject property is 159 West 72nd Street on North Side Street between Amsterdam and Longest Side. The proposal before you today is to remove existing non-illuminated signage above first and second floors and to re-clad to existing blade signs, as is evidenced by the designation photograph. The existing signage was present at designation 1990 and has been re-clad. It's a little hard to see on here because it's a straight shot, but there is a blade sign here. But it is, just for clarification, it is a little bit hard to see. This slide shows the existing contacts within the block on 72nd Street, so there's lots of signage here. A side-by-side comparison shows a reduction in the amount of signage, and will expose the facade behind. The aluminum painted halo lit signage above the second floor will project four inches from the facade of the building and measure a total of just under 37 inches in height. Most letters here will be only 17 inches. And to note, staff level approval requires signage to be no larger than 18 inches and project no more than two inches from a sign panel. Above the ground floor, signage will be a half inch thick acrylic. And for staff level approval, that would require painted plastic. The blade signage will be re-clad within the existing floor. And to recap, this proposal is being reviewed by the commission and is not a staff level approval due to the size and projection of the signage above the second floor and the non-painted acrylic finish above the first floor. Again, the applicant is here to answer any questions you may have.
Are there any questions? We'll take testimony, and then we may come back to you. Mark Diller?
Good afternoon, commissioners. Mark Diller, Chair of the Preservation Committee in Community Board Seven. We are here to recommend approval of this application. The existing condition actually borders on the garish, and that's saying something on West 72nd Street where there's quite a bit of variety of signage. The proposed signs are actually less intrusive than the existing condition, which kind of calls to mind a highway billboard. They are situated on the block that has no coherent pattern in terms of typeface, or typography, or sign dimensions. The modest impact of the backlighting, we... The modest impact of the backlighting, we find to be appropriate, given the light pollution that's everywhere on this block anyway. And one thing that I did want to call to your attention, a little out of the ordinary, is that one of the effects of the change in signage is to replace the co-op advertising partners name prominence of that name with the name of a local merchant. And when in doubt, I want to think local, and so I endorse the use of the local merchant's name over that of his estimable partner, but still a partner. Thanks very much.
Thank you. Kelly Carroll?
Kelly Carroll, HBC commends the applicants for opposing signage that will reveal more of the building and allowing its architecture to be better read. However, we cannot support internally illuminated signs, and would like to see the blade signs in those of two one without internal lighting, as the building displayed at the time of designation.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak on this application? We have a letter from Landmarks West supporting this application. And Corey, do you want to just address the vertical signs, and those are grandfathered signs, and are lost?
Yes, both of them are grandfathered, it is true, in the one designation photo you presented, it's a straight-on shot, you just can't see that there aren't two of them, but there are, we bring it out, the same building from a different angle, look at the next block, where you can see there were two related signs. They are both grandfathered, and in fact, staff has ability to approve retaining the box sort of frame itself, and just sort of swapping out the ones or the panel that goes within it. So staff is actually reviewing that part of it, but you all are looking at it in the context of the cumulative effect of those, plus what they're asking to replace at the other two locations.
Okay, so the signs at the lower level are backlit, but again, that is something that the staff kind of proved, it's not the reason that the application is before us. It's really due to the size of the sign, the interior, the acrylic interior, which is the graphic. Or any thoughts? Okay. Is there a question, or?
No, no, it's a comment.
Yeah, let's, I think, is there anything you'd like to say before we close the hearing?
Uh, no.
Okay, so let's have a motion to close the hearing. On favor.
Aye.
Thanks.
Well, I think this is, like, testimony, this is a big improvement, but honestly, just very virtually, in favor of the building itself. You know, it's not historic, it's not anything that we ever approved, I presume, but it's a, in a stature that stands out a little bit differently from other commercial buildings in this and other commercial streets. And the signage here is revealing a little bit more of it, and is playing out up to the strengths of the building itself, so I appreciate the building's energy, the signage is helping us see that a little bit better.
In fact, it's actually in Landmarks West's letter, the reason that they supported it, was because it was revealing this nineteen seventies architecture that was interesting and contributed to the street. Diane?
Yeah, I agree with Fred, and I was just thinking about the issue of, it is really messy, much sign language on the street, and obviously we just get to review the mosaic on the floor. But I was thinking about the issue, like, in my head, which it has really, there's a palette of expectation for signage, and wondering whether we couldn't get a little closer to that in a street like this. Obviously, there's always the issue, as there is on Madison Avenue or whatever, of, you know, logos and particular kinds of fonts and so forth, but, you know, I think probably a lot, the question is, how do we get closer to some continuity, not necessarily consistency, but some kind of parameters of signage? I know we have some that the staff are looking at, but how do we get closer to something that looks cleaner as you walk down the street, and still allows each merchant to have their individual...
Right. I mean, we do have sign rules that the staff uses for many, many stores, so that in some ways ensures some, this consistency and approach. And I think this building was, just because of its nineteen seventies architecture, it was a little unique, and its grandfathered signage was so, you know, we brought this forward. But I think that while it's still a little bit bigger at the second floor than would be at staff level, I think it's much more like the spirit of the guidelines that we apply everywhere else.
Yeah, I do too. I was just thinking about how you get the rest of this.
That was a speech, right?
Yeah, I was really talking about the fact that, as I said, like, when I get into the audience, everybody's just encouraging me. I mean, you're going to see that everywhere but where it's going to be, it's significant.
Yeah.
The question is, can we get a little closer to some kind of appropriate look of the street?
Yeah, well, it's interesting, this particular street actually had their own guidelines that are much more loose than our staff-level guidelines for everywhere else in the city. And when we amended, or created sort of our rules, the loose guidelines for Seventy-Second Street and Longest Avenue were superseded by a more formal, certain gray market rules. So that made you see the legacy of that earlier. All right, great, so I think we're gonna approve that.
One fifty-nine West Seventy-Second Street, Upper West Side Central Park District. The application is to install signage. Noting the building is not one for which the Upper West Side Central Park District was designated. Further noting, signage was present at the time of the designation. Recommend approval, finding that the typology of this commercial building is present as for large signs, with the presence of large illuminated signage above the second story, that the size of the proposed signage is well proportioned to the facade, that the attachment of the signage is not lost, and that the whole damage to the facade, which will further expose the results after removal of the existing sign panels, that assumed amount of signage will also include with having the two large vertical blades, will not overwhelm the facade, and that it will also have the track of the street's getting along the structure.
On favor? Any opposed? That's approved, thank you.
Okay, we're gonna look through the last item of the day, this is item number five, LPC one-nine-two-six-zero-four, for an application for modification of some old Manhattan Block, of course, in the three St. Mark's Place, in the Hollywood House, Federal Scott Townhouse, fourteen thirty-one, application is filed by the preservation commission. Issue report to the City Planning Commission, promoting an application for modification for pursuant section seven four seventy-nine of the zone.
Good afternoon, commissioners, I'm Mr. Preservation Staff, and I present to you an application for four St. Mark's Place, also known as the Hamilton Holly House Individual Landmark, located between Second and Third Avenue in East Village. The application is proposing to transfer air rights to a receiving site for new building located across the street at three St. Mark's Place, also seeking certain building rights. In addition to its establishment of a continuing maintenance plan, restorative work is already underway at four St. Marks, as approved on the previous certificate of appropriateness, that also included work at the lower floors of the front facade, and construction of a rear addition. Additional new restorative work is being proposed in support of the current application, and will be explained in this presentation. Valerie Campbell, lawyer of the project, will lead up the presentation on behalf of the owner.
My name is Valerie Campbell, I'm a February eleven, we're landways counsel to the owner of the development site at three St. Mark's Place. I'm joined by Morris Ashme, the architect of the new building, Ward Dennis, the preservation consultant, and Andrew Perez, the architect for four St. Mark's Place. As Edward said, this is an application for a report to the City Planning Commission pursuant to seventy-four seventy-nine of the zoning resolution, and it would facilitate the construction of a ten-story office building located at three St. Mark's Place. This section seventy-four seventy-nine special permit would allow for a transfer of eight thousand three hundred eighty-six square feet of development rights from the zoning lot at four St. Mark's Place, which is occupied by Hamilton Holly House and Individual Landmark. It would also modify the provisions of zoning resolution section thirty-three four thirty-two to allow the new building to penetrate the maximum, well, the maximum sky exposure plane within the twenty-foot initial setback district on St. Mark's Place. This waiver allows for a better relationship between the landmark building and the adjacent buildings on St. Mark's Place, and also facilitates better office for place. As a condition of the special permit, the owner of the Hamilton Holly House and his architect have worked with LPC staff to ensure that the work on the building is more expensive, which is more expensive than the work initially proposed, will restore the landmark building to sound first-class condition, and will agree to implement a cyclical maintenance plan for the building. These commitments will be set forth in restrictive declaration, which is binding upon the owner and the owner's successors in the signs in perpetuity. The landmark and the development site are both located in the C six one zoning district, which is a commercial that they are at sixth. The landmark has approximately eight thousand six hundred forty-six square feet of unutilized floor area, and eight thousand three hundred eighty-six square feet could be transferred to the building through the special permit. Ward Dennis is going to talk about the landmark, mark, and the restoration work, and then Morris Ashme, who is actually the director.
Ward Dennis, from Hughes Place Bar, a preservation consultant. Zoning maps, and I'm gonna skip forward. This is, these are photos of the receiving site for the air rights, here on the left, and here on the right, and then below, one story, the piece of the town across the street. As Edward described, the Hamilton Holly House here is the individual landmark which is transferring, developing rights across the street. Hamilton Holly House was constructed in eighteen thirty-one by Thomas Davis. He designed the whole row of buildings on both sides of St. Mark's Place as speculative developments. And in eighteen thirty-three, the house was sold to Alexander Hamilton's son, Colonel Alexander Hamilton. He and his mother and his sister lived in the house, sisters' family, it's Holly, and it's the main, Holly House. The photo on the left is actually the building adjacent, that is now heavily modified, but it's the earliest photo we have of any of the building, really the earliest image we have of any of the buildings in this original Davis Road. And you can see that it is very typical, classic, federal-style, row house, three-and-a-half stories with segmentally arched dormers, gips around at the base of the building, raised stoop, parlor floor windows, and a wrought iron and cast iron balcony. At the center is the tax photo from circa nineteen forty. At this point, you can see that there are already modifications to the building, including the addition of a decorated fire escape, which came in the mid-nineteenth century. By eighteen fifty, the building had been converted to rooming houses and apartments as the neighborhood had changed. And on the far right is the nineteen eighty stacks photo, starting in nineteen eighty, trash at Longville. The clothing store was occupying the basement and first story of the building, and the other floors continued to be used for apartments. The condition in the nineteen eighties photo on the right is essentially the condition at the start of the project, which started about a year and a half ago. You reviewed this as a certificate of appropriateness. Initially, they came in with an application for a new petition, which was not approved. I will take you through some of the modifications that have been done since the certificate of appropriateness application, particularly in response to the special permit application. Starting at the top of the roof, the pitch roof was originally shown with bow slate dormers, that has now been changed to real slate. The dormers are now being modified to have true segmentally arched windows, and to better match the historic appearance of the dormers. We're basing this on historic photos and images we have of this building, as well as precedents we have for similar segmentally arched segmented dormers in a row of buildings on Grand Street nearby from this period. The wood cornice was part of the application you saw previously. New wood windows are going to be installed throughout. These are now being modified from what has already been installed to better match the federal period precedent, so the sightlines on the jams and on the mountains will be greatly improved from what has, what has gone so far. At the parlor floor, the wrought iron balcony is as approved at the certificate of appropriateness hearing. The door surround is being significantly modified from what was approved in the original application, to be much more in keeping with the federal style, with the engaged ionic columns, as opposed to the high lasters. These are now photos on the left of the building before the work began, and on the right, as it currently sits, before some of these additional modifications have been done. You can see that the gips around marble was painted, that paint is, has been stripped, some additional work there needs to be done. At the base of the building, you can see that openings were modified for doors, and there will have gates were put on. Those are all being modified. In addition, the stoop will be re-clad in marble to match the original appearance. The marble itself is actually in remarkably good condition. Usually, you see this period marble just disintegrating, shivering. This stuff is in amazingly good condition, the recollection has not broken at all, and it's pretty much better nicely. On the right is a photo of the building from last month. Not shown here are the modifications to the dormers, which will be done to put a true segmented arched sash at the top, and the modifications to the front entry and the windows, which will have better sightline. More photos of the existing condition prior to the start of work, you see the cornice had been removed after nineteen forty. The dormers were heavily modified and stuck out. All the windows had been replaced, there was a second staircase leading to the parlor floor storefront. The roof was re-clad in asphalt sheaves. The brick and, brick and marble were in very poor condition, and we have a lot of cleaning. And here's a detail of the stoop as it had been re-clad in brick. There is, down at the base here, still some marble remaining, and that's the marble that we will be matching for, this is the rebuilt stoop. We have details, and these are in your packet, if you have questions about them, but again, the dormers will be replaced with, or rebuilt, the new dormers with segmentally arched sash, high lasters on the front, and returning cornice on the side. The door surround will be completely redone using ionic, sorry, ionic engaged columns. A lot of these details are based on the merchant's house nearby on East Fourth Street, modified slightly because the dimensions of the opening are different, so we have scaled them appropriately, the side lights, full height door, and then the existing transom bar will be restored, and a new fan light will be installed to match the restoring. At the rear of the building, prior to the start of work, there was a two-story rear yard addition, that has now been removed, and an additional one-story rear building has been exposed. The existing conditions prior to the start of the project were stuckout plating, asphalt sheaves at the roof, the dormers were in quite poor condition. Photo on the right shows the as-built, completed project, rebuilt brick wall at the rear for a full two stories, cast film lintels, dormers had been... The dormers have been completely rebuilt, and again, real slate shekels on the roof. That is the end of the restoration scope. I have to answer questions. I think they're all answered.
I think I know the answer sadly, that the interior layout was such that the fire escapes cannot be removed from the part of the building.
Yeah, fire escape was incorporated into the egress patterns for the building through the certificate of appropriateness. It is a historic fire escape. It goes back to probably the eighteen seventies, eighteen eighties in the eye of the beholder.
Can you just talk a little bit about the ironwork? Do you have any data on what the original condition of the ironwork was, and is this reflected in that condition?
The ironwork was...
The photo had some, said something that looked like a very elaborate ironwork. I don't know if it was this building or what.
Yeah, we have some photos of ironwork not on this building, but on other buildings in the row further east on St. Mark's. The ironwork here is, as it was approved at public hearings, certificate of appropriateness. It is based on federal period details for the balancers in the right, but it is not an exact replica of what was there originally, either in detail or in plans. This is a little more segmentary part. Part of the reason for that is that this is still within retail. This is a door heater, so one of the paths to egress out of this retail is from here down these stairs.
Any other questions on the restoration work?
Sorry, I don't want to ask you a question, but I want to compliment. This is an extraordinary house with an extraordinary legacy of architects, and I think slowly but surely it's been coming back to the exception of this two zigzaggy thing. A remarkable story, so I think this is a great story of how important buildings can be returned from the most unimaginable situation of hippiness, I guess, in St. Mark's. Anyway, it's a great story, and I just want to compliment all of the work here.
Thank you. The architects have been working very hard on this at St. Mark's.
Good afternoon, Commissioner Morris Asher. The architect for the new proposed building. I'm going to talk a little bit about the heights of contact, zoning, as well as some details of the new building. We believe that the massing in height of what we're proposing is in scale with the neighborhood, and we believe that it's actually better than the as-of-right massing, and we're asking for some relief in terms of setbacks, which I'll detail right now. But you can see that the overall height here is one hundred and fifty, at the highest point, one hundred and fifty feet. The building to the north is one seventy, and just to the west is over two hundred, is two fourteen. And you see the proposed site relationship to this whole building. So as you can see on the zoning diagram, the two wedge-shaped portions are what we're asking for relief. We're actually proposing to lower the street wall height from eighty-five, which is a permitted street wall, to sixty-three, so twenty-two feet lower. We're approaching slightly here, but just to give you an idea, the setback on Third Avenue is fifteen feet, the first setback, then it goes up to twenty-five, and then thirty-one feet. Here's the portion we're asking for relief. We're setting back four feet at sixty-three foot point, then it goes to eight, and then it goes to twenty-five, I believe, and then at the front it is nine, and then the setback is in excess, it's up twenty-four feet. So you see it's what is required at that point. And you can see here as well, sorry, feet, unfortunately, the right is what we're asking This image shows three configurations. The proposed is on the right. This is the as-of-right scheme with no additional floor area. This is the as-of-right scheme with the additional eighty-three hundred square feet. And so we're going to compare the as-of-right with the additional floor area to our proposed massing in sequels and images that I'll show you now. And so again, on the left is the as-of-right zoning with the additional floor area and what we're proposing with the relief on those two setback areas. You'll notice that at sixty-three feet, that setback, that line approximately aligns with the heights of the buildings on St. Mark's, so in the sixty, fifty-seven to seventy-foot range of the existing buildings. Here's a view looking northwest, again, to the as-of-right schemes and the one we're This is a view looking north from Cooper Square on Third Avenue, and again, this is the reduced height of the first setback, or street wall, so. If you saw, there's an elevation of the building. I'll show the materials in a second, primarily brick and metal design, with this top portion is actually covered with green, and with green applied to each one of the setbacks. Here's a view looking east, building the foreground. This is the plastic paint brick that we're using with the round profile. This is looking west on St. Mark's, and that's that first setback. And then a view of the building from the back, an actual test. These are the materials, plastic brick, red-brown color. These are the whole bricks that are used to frame the windows.
Mark, just a question, Mark. Can you just, a question, our memories in terms of what the funding is that we're supposed to make in the seventy-four seventy-nine? There's one that you always have to make, and then there's one that depends on what they're asking for. So in this case, you have to talk about the restoration of the landmark. They have to do sort of a preservation purpose for the preservation of the landmark with restricted debt you talked about, to continue maintenance plan. They, that, since they're also asking for bulk waivers, you are required to comment on whether the bulk waivers have a harmonious relationship with the landmark, and whether that relationship...
So I guess my question to Morris and the team would be, they've explained a little bit about the contextual impetus behind the request. I don't think that they've talked specifically about how the proposed modifications to the zoning affect the landmark. Is that my dear, good question to ask?
How do the bulk waivers have a harmonious relationship with the landmark?
Given the relationship between the landmark and the development site, you largely don't perceive, see both buildings in the same view. The photos that were shown are where you do see the buildings in relation to one another. One is looking southeast across Third Avenue. In this view, there is no change from the modification of bulk because all the modification is happening at a higher level. The other location where you see it is as you're walking west along St. Mark's, where depending on what side of the street you're on, you can see either more of the landmark or more of the new building. We chose this view where you see more of the landmark. The result of the modification, in this case, is actually to lower the street wall. So the street wall could be eighty-five, it could be eighty-five feet as of right. Because we're able to penetrate the sky exposure plane at this higher level, we can then lower the street wall height at this level. So the impact here of the special permit is actually to lower the street wall height in relation to the building directly across the street. And these are really the two views where you would see both buildings in what really is a wide-angle photo, but if you're walking down the street, looking back and forth and yawned together.
Any other questions? Okay, we'll take testimony, and we'll probably come back to you. All right, so please forgive me if I mispronounce or have you look only reading some of the spelling and names. Asher, Butler.
Thank you. Pronunciation, right. Thank you, commissioners. I thank you for the opportunity to testify today regarding the proposed transfer of development rights to the landmark of four St. Mark's Place, Hamilton Holley House, side across the street, three St. Mark's Place. I'm sorry, I should also say I'm here representing State Senator Brad Boilman and Senate Member Jennifer Flint. If approved, the transfer of eight thousand three hundred eighty-six square feet of development rights could result in the construction of an out-of-parent ten-story building at the corner of St. Mark's Place and Third Avenue. Moreover, the modification of ZR section thirty-three dash four thirty-two of the zoning code would allow the developer to penetrate the maximum, the maximum front wall height and sky exposure plane. While proposed agreement would create a fund for the ongoing maintenance of the historic Hamilton Holley House, we believe that five percent of the sale is trivial in relation to what the community is being asked to accept. We have deep reservations regarding the terms of transfer of this project and the legitimacy of a change to the zoning resolution that will facilitate the tall building on this historic block. We fully support the sentiments raised by Community Board Three in their recent resolution opposing this application, as well as residents and neighborhood preservationists who have expressed concerns, including the Greenwich Village Society for Historic Preservation and the East Village Community Coalition. We thank them for their advocacy. The importance of community input cannot be understated, and our community has spoken out against this proposal, which will chip away at the unique character, the beauty of our neighborhood. As with all air rights transfers throughout New York City, the developer of three St. Mark's Place is seeking this application in order to build a larger building. The plan is to participate in a uniform land use review procedure where the money paid as a community gift back to the historic Hamilton Holley House is perceived as a public benefit, yet this does not account for the recent approval of the nearby tech hub and other zoning changes that are leading to the overdevelopment of office space and taller buildings that are out of context within this area. Hamilton Holley House is but one historic example belonging to St. Mark's Place that must be protected. If the Landmark's Preservation Commission approves, developers wish to transfer air rights to build a tall structure at the entrance to this historic street. It could inspire further out-of-context development at St. Mark's Place. The fight against out-of-context and out-of-scale development is ongoing in this community. Only recently, the downtown community fought against the construction of a tall building next to the Merchants House Museum on East Fourth Street. The Merchants House and much of Lower Manhattan are essential to understanding the architectural, cultural, and historical significance of New York City. While developers may be willing to allocate an amount for perpetual maintenance of the Hamilton Holley House, but it does not exist a guarantee that further development will not put the historic house at risk. Even without the additional square footage that would be awarded if this air rights transfer is approved at forty-two thousand square feet, three St. Mark's Place will still be significantly larger than the surrounding buildings. This will already be a tall building for the block, and approving the transfer of air rights would allow for even taller and more out-of-context buildings to be built. We always have reservations with projects that are approved contingent upon air rights transfer in exchange for the restoration or improvement of a new building. Historic buildings are frequently purchased and improved within the bounds of LPC regulations without the need for a community to accept a taller structure. Furthermore, we do not want to create precedents that would encourage developers to use air rights transfers, as rare as they may be, to build taller structures that cite and light and air from historic low-rise neighborhoods. To conclude, the Hamilton Holley House should be preserved on merit for being a notable structure in our community that represents an important part of New York City history, not necessarily because of sale of air rights made that possible. For these reasons, we ask the LPC to deny this application for a city planning commission report pursuant to section seventy-four dash seventy-nine and a modification of ZR section thirty-three four thirty-two. Thank you.
Okay, Jerry Younger.
Hi there, my name is... My name is Jerry Younger. I am here on behalf of New York City Councilmember Harvey Norherron. Jerry, per se, and she'll be sitting in the comments here as well as the other people. Thank you, dear commissioners. Thank you for the opportunity to provide comments on this application. As you consider whether to issue a report to the City Planning Commission relating to an application for a modification of bulk pursuant to section seventy-four seventy-nine of the seventy resolution, how do you seriously consider the precedent setting nature that this special permit application entails? One section of the permit I wish to draw your attention to requires city planning commission to examine how the development receiving the air rights transfer aligns with the character of the Hamilton Holley House and surrounding community. The seventy-four seventy-nine permit specifically states that quote, "The commission shall give due consideration to the relationship between the landmark building and any buildings developed or enlarged on the adjacent block or materials designed, scaled, and nationable, and it may prescribe appropriate conditions and safeguards to minimize adverse aft effects on the character of the surrounding area." While there have been twelve previous approvals of some of the forty-seven-nine special permits, since the permit's creation in nineteen sixty-eight, none have required LPC or CPC to consider this special specific clause of the permit in a neighborhood with such historical congruency as the East Village. The previous permits, which were for an average of transfer of one hundred eighty-one thousand two hundred eighty-five square feet, occurred in either Midtown or the financials. Neighborhoods with far less historical congruency with the East Village. For example, in two thousand eight approval of seventy-four seventy-nine permit for the development of six and ten blocks into Abingdon, CPC acknowledges lack of historical assessment for seventy-four seventy-nine permits in Midtown where quote, "Small lots of high densities can cite plenty in design and context of a landmark challenging." Considering that this application is for a much smaller air rights transfer in a much more historically congruent neighborhood, I believe it is important that LPC consider the proposed relationship of the new building to the surrounding area and whether it is harmonious or appropriate. The report should also include a review of the cycling for the lot and the lots to be developed, as well as examine the level of input that community leaders, historians, and preservation experts have been able to give over the character of the building before issuing a report to CPC. The approval or denial of this application will set the standard for future seventy-four seventy-nine permits in similar neighborhoods, so we must take great care to ensure that the original intent of the special permit is maintained. As the Department of City Plans stated in the seventy-four seventy-nine permits grade quote, "We anticipate that the proposed amendments will have multiple benefits and that the neighborhood will equal out and retain an essential amenity, revitalize landmark, plus new development harmonious with the character of the area." Based on discussions I have had with residents, it is not clear to me that the application makes sufficient outreach to the community to ensure that the new development will truly be quote, "harmonious with an area widely considered to be the gateway to the East Village." In a resolution passed by Community Board Three opposing an approval by LPC of the special permit, the board wrote the quote, "The members of the community spoke against the transfer of air rights, arguing that the ten-story building would not be harmonious with the character of the neighborhood." As of today, I have not seen a collaborative process established for community members to provide input, as I believe there should be. Considering that the application of this permit, in this case, could construct a building at nearly the same height as in Wright, I believe this permit process provides the rare opportunity for the community to play a part in ensuring that new development in the East Village remains true to the identity of this area. I simply ask LPC that if you consider this application, you ensure that the original goals of seventy-four seventy-nine special permit are preserved and that the new building is harmonious with the landmark and the surrounding area. Thank you.
Thank you. We have a number of speakers, so I would ask everyone to please respect and prepare at time Linda Jones.
Hi, I'm Linda Jones. I'm chair of the CPG Landmark Committee. Have you heard CPG unanimously opposed or sit their last... Have you heard CP3 unanimously opposed or sit their last protest? I'm just going to give you a couple of high points from our resolution, which you have copied, I believe. Recently, about, what, about a year and a half ago, we approved and you approved a CVA for that fourth St. Mark's Place. The results of that have been very nice. We appreciate it. We appreciate the additional work that's been done in this beautiful building. However, the community, had you been around when we had our committee meeting, you would have been at a very lively meeting. Community members who live in the neighborhood were unanimously opposed. They don't feel that the tall building fits into the St. Mark's Place environment. It stands up like a fort. So we did oppose it. We opposed the proposed transfer of development rights and request that the commission not issue a report to the Department of City Planning approving use of development rights for four St. Mark's Place and three St. Mark's Place.
Thank you. Laura Sewell.
Hi, I'm Laura Sewell, Executive Director of the East Village Community Coalition. I'm starting with their governance of St. Mark's Place as the gateway to the East Village. Everyone keeps saying that. I just want to back up for a minute and say what that means for us. The other comparable heights that were mentioned in the presentation are buildings on Third Avenue. So Third Avenue, if you drive down Third Avenue, you'll see a lot of tall buildings. You'll see more and more tall buildings every day. We walk from across, when we go east, we walk across A Street because there are some streets that don't go through, some streets that crisscross like they do in the Village, so a lot of people use that as their corridor. When you walk east along A Street, you see to the south a four-story building and a block of four-story buildings. You see that on the north side of the street with the proposed new site. So that's what we mean when we say it's the gateway to the East Village. It's the entrance that the tourists see after they spin the cube and go astounded. That's what it is. So this is an important corner. It's an important building. Cooper's Union is right there. And only the warm side end of the proposed design seems to be an attempt to fit into what I would describe as the inner hood. Limited additional work in the maintenance plan for the massively restored Hamilton Holly House is now offset to impact of adding a massive commercial property to an area already experiencing extreme development pressure. The East Village community coalition therefore objects to the transfer of over eight thousand square feet of air rights from four St. Mark's Place to a new commercial project across the street. We urge the commission to oversee the design of the new building to the extent that it can to ensure it's appropriate on a significant point of impact for your consideration.
Thank you. Mary Burley.
Hi, I'm Andrew Burman, representing Village Preservation. Thank you for the opportunity to testify. Village Preservation is opposed to the transfer of air rights from the Hamilton Holly House in eighteen thirty-one federal-style townhouse to the proposed office tower at the corner of St. Mark's Place and Third Avenue. The potential benefits to this individual landmark in the neighborhood are simply not worth the trade-off of the air rights transfer. Most of the restoration for St. Mark's Place, which was approved in 2016, has already been executed, including the roof dormers, the installation of the cornice, repointing and repair of the brick, replacement of the windows and doors, replacement of the transom light at the entry, installation of new metal railings, and repair of the street. In this case, the applicant is simply seeking to get after the fat credit and financial benefit for work already done and paid for in order to allow the increase by twenty percent of the size of the square footage of the planned office tower. I will note here, by the way, that the presentation that was made to the Community Board did actually explicitly include a lot of the work that was already done and approved, saying that it was part of this application. We have serious concern about the planned office tower at the beginning of St. Mark's Place, at what is considered the gateway to the East Village. And although we understand that this may be in some respects outside of the jurisdiction of the LPC, we believe that an even larger office tower at this very significant and prominent location in the East Village would have a detrimental impact upon the character of the neighborhood, as well as this landmark and the nearby Cooper Union Foundation Building. It should be noted that we do not object to the height and setback waivers being sought. It's also important to consider that while the applicant has added some additional restorations to four St. Mark's Place beyond what was approved in 2016, part of the beauty and significance of this house, which we, and the New York Landmarks Conservancy, proposed for designation in 2002, are the changes it has undergone over time. The plan to simply erase all of those changes as a means to gain approval for the air rights transfer, which will create a huge benefit for the developer, is not worth the trade-off both to the landmark property and certainly to the neighborhood. We are huge supporters of buildings like the Merchants' House Museum, which are perfectly preserved slices of New York as it was two centuries ago. This is not what this house should be or needs to be. Turning this house into such a museum piece should not justify the air rights transfer, whose real purpose is to simply increase the size of the office tower rather than to fund necessary or otherwise un-economical restoration work. Thank you.
Thank you. Sarah Bean Atman.
Sarah Bean Atman, I'm reading on behalf of two people who came out of tents today, but ask them to read their testimony. The first is Senator Ellen Apiver, President of Tents and Science Streets Block Association. This block association proposed the air rights transfer for four St. Mark's Place, which would make planned office tower at three St. Mark's Place twenty percent larger. This proposed air rights transfer is not in public interest and would harm the character of the East Village neighborhood in which it is located. Much of the restoration work to the landmark building at four St. Mark's Place is already done, and this does not require the air rights transfer to fund. The meager five percent proceeds from the sale of the air rights would go towards the maintenance of the landmark house shows that this proposed transfer offers relatively little benefit to the public and little true preservation purpose. Instead, the purpose of the planned transfer seems largely to be to line the pockets of two developers. Most distressingly, the air rights transfer would increase the size of the planned office tower at three St. Mark's Place by twenty percent. An office tower does not belong at St. Mark's Place, and increasing the size of this out-of-character development by twenty percent only adds insult to injury. The planned tower is part of the unfortunate trend of the expansion of Silicon Alley and Midtown South into Greenwich Village and the East Village, which is being further fueled by the recent upzoning on Fourteenth Street for the planned tech hub. Please do not approve this air rights transfer. Second person I'm reading for is Ms. Brubler. As Chair of the Landmarks Committee and represent the Bowery Alliance of Neighbors, please do not approve this air rights transfer as it would diminish the character of the storied East Village neighborhood. Since almost all of the restoration work for the landmark building at four St. Mark's Place is already completed, the air rights transfer would have little effect on the landmark. The meager five percent proceeds from the sale of the air rights that would go towards maintenance of the landmark house is not nearly enough of a worthy trade-off for the twenty percent increase in the size of the planned office building at three St. Mark's Place. Instead, the purpose of the planned transfer seems largely to increase the profits of two developers rather than a meaningful public benefit. Thank you.
Thank you. Christopher Kauf.
Christopher Kauf, for the Society for the Architecture of the City. It will be, but we cannot imagine how, the argument will be made that there is a rational basis for a finding that a harmonious relationship which Section 74-79 requires could ever exist between the Hamilton Holly House and the proposed new development on the corner across the street. Two structures are at war with one another can scarcely be imagined. Hamilton Holly is a fine old federal mansion, albeit somewhat scarred by a less-than-first-class restoration, whose shortcomings are difficult to assess and reveal from the presentation materials, but it's interesting that materials do not reproduce the eighteen ninety-three Kings manual illustration, which was sharply found for a dislocation report, and some of the details appear to reproduce. But still, it's a dignified presence left to us from the early days of republic. The new building is not only on a different scale, but it is from another world. One was parodied by a satirical illustrator who drew a parade of tall new buildings spaced with sleek, modern-looking grids of our time, except that on closer inspection, the grids were composed of old-fashioned accounting ledger data filled with arbitrary calculations. The zoning resolution 74-79 dates back to nineteen sixty-eight and was originally intended as relief from potential hardship of falling landmark property then. Because the danger that the property might be neglected or abandoned with real maintenance agreements were required. Today, we see a changed economy, with landmark townhouses in Manhattan changing hands for tens of millions of dollars. Given this context, the continuing maintenance agreement is less urgent, and the harmonious relationship required should not be ignored, because the continuing maintenance of something as rare and valuable as the grand federal townhouse in Manhattan is scarcely at risk, while the neighborhood that it frames is visually much more vulnerable.
Thank you. Kelly Carroll.
Kelly Carroll, Historic Districts Council. HBC objects to the transfer of over eight thousand square feet of air rights to a prominent corner site at the entrance to St. Mark's Place in the East Village. The Hamilton Holly House has already been undergoing substantial restoration work under two thousand sixteen permit issued by this body, and we do not find a limited additional work or maintenance plan to justify the transfer bulk across the street. While the site is not designated historic district, it is nonetheless extraordinarily prominent street within a historic neighborhood. The preceding site is also in the immediate visual context of not only the Hamilton Holly House, but the Cooper Union and the German-American Shooting Society Building. Guarding corners of the proposed building and cussing with the setbacks does not ameliorate the damage being done to the scale of this block. To the extent that landmarks oversees the design of the building in a 74-79 application, the new building should respect the predominant four-story cornice line of St. Mark's Place. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak at the application?
Yes.
Come up and state your name from the record.
Hello, my name is Suzy Shaw, and I live at eight St. Mark's Place. I represent the eight St. Mark's Place Tenants Association. I urge you to not approve this air rights transfer. The proposed air rights are not in the public interest, and they would harm the character of the neighborhood, membership of the East Village, and St. Mark's Place. As previously mentioned, most of the renovations have already been done in the location of four St. Mark's Place, and the meager amount that's allocated for future preservation, I believe, does not warrant air rights transfer. It does profit the developers on the three St. Mark's Place site, however, who stand not only a large, who would not only get a much larger building, but also much more revenue from rental income. I'm going to skip over the other things that have already been mentioned. Living on the block, I believe the depictions here are a little bit deceptive. I'm a designer, so I know how to present these kinds of things and make them look, or try to make them look persuasive, but you will be able to see the document from the vantage, from also the vantage points shown here. Also, when you're a person looking at, you know, escape, you feel the vision is much wider than what can be shown in pictures. Even that said, when you see the actual drawing of the proposed development, they have not managed to make it look good compared to what I think consists in this neighborhood. I don't believe a twenty percent increase would improve the look of it. I believe a good architect can make the new proposal and make, you know, the building look as of right, proposed drawing, which I believe is purposely made to look extremely ugly, could make it look much better. Again, I urge you not to approve this transfer. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak? Yes, come up and state your name from the record.
Hello, my name is Jess Christie. I'm a longtime East Village resident. As the council has been mentioned by others, in recent years, the East Village has experienced a tsunami of oversized development, how we've got a listing of various items which other people have talked about. This proposed sale of air rights seems to be a naked abuse of the spirit of zoning for the neighborhood with minimal relevance for historic preservation and maximum admission by developers. This will have the inevitable effect of hastening the gentrification of the neighborhood and the erosion of the historic low-rise charm of the East Village, driving up costs and thereby ultimately driving longer residents out. If this air rights shell name is approved, then developers with one percent will continue to line up to build never bigger buildings, arguing in the sphere of dominoes that their newest monster is indeed commensurate in scale and context with the one that has just been forced into the neighborhood. I urge the commission to reject this disingenuous proposal, which has far more to do with profit at historic preservation. Thanks very much.
Thank you. Anyone else who'd like to speak? Okay, so as Linda Jones said, we do have a copy of the resolution from Community Board Three, which opposes the proposed transfer of development rights. We have a letter from Village Alliance writing in support of the restoration and continuing maintenance plan, and finding that the multi-story office building would be filled whether or not the special permit is approved, and therefore is imperative that we be, this be the only opportunity to find the full restoration and maintenance of this historic building. We have a letter from the New York Landmarks Conservancy, finding that the Section 74-79 has been a valuable mechanism for restoration of landmarks, and we believe this application falls within its requirements. And a letter from a group called The Groundstone, also supporting the application. And we have another letter from an individual supporting the application. We also have received two hundred and twenty-two emails and one letter in opposition from individuals. So would you like to respond to the comments? I think it would be helpful to discuss the two findings that we have to make, the restoration and cyclical maintenance plan, as well as the as-of-right versus the proposed transfer, and the two bulk waivers that we have to find.
Can I just add one more question to that? I'm sorry, just to keep my qualification. I'm a little confused. Are these the three, what appear to be three distinct lots on Third Avenue? Can we just go, are they one contiguous?
It will be.
No, it will be. I'm asking right now, it's...
Right now, it's separate tax lots.
Separate tax lots. Do each one of them have an as-of-right?
No, or, well, this is a development site composed of the three sites, so it's a single zoning lot, so we analyze the development of that single zoning lot. They're all, they're under single ownership.
They're under single ownership. They're being assembled, so that they will have a larger square footage than they would each individually. However, they are not in a historic district, and that site is not under our jurisdiction. So our purview is limited to the restoration work of the landmark and the two bulk waivers.
The one.
One bulk waiver that results in two sections of the building, and finding that that bulk waiver has a harmonious relationship with the...
Just that bulk waiver.
Just.
It facilitates...
And just to put it into context, many times when we review special permits to transfer development rights from landmarks to another site, in general, they're typically going from a smaller building that has available development rights to a site where there will be a larger building. And so the question of harmonious relationship has been one that the commission has historically sort of found in base height, and then while not specifically a harmonious, not specifically a finding in the... And then while not specifically a harmonious, not specifically a finding in the resolution about the bulk waivers, we've often looked at the materials as well to see if there's a relationship. But it's sort of outside of the required finding for us.
Right, it's just so complicated to try to understand it in the context of a one-story, a two-story, and then the existing building on the corner. It's, it's not just a. It's not the point.
Right.
But the, that's right, the, the, they are acting without.
Yes, and, and John, correct me if I'm wrong, but the, the picture on the left is what they can build without any restoration work for Hamilton Hall at the house. The middle one is proposing the transfer of the 8,000 square feet from Hamilton House, and our only required finding for that scenario would be that there is a restoration plan and cyclical maintenance plan for the landmark. And then the third picture, which is the proposal, is the transfer and then seeking the one bulk waiver for the two setback floors. And in that case, we have to find the restoration work and cyclical maintenance plan serve their purpose, but in addition that that bulk waiver has a harmonious relationship.
So if the team didn't show up here today, picture number one, they can do it without.
Picture number two.
Same a word.
Picture number two, well, we would still have to find on the restoration work.
Correct.
But otherwise.
But not on anything else.
Not on anything else.
And if I could just briefly address a comment that came up clearly in the testimony about the issue that restoration work was begun before this application is before you. It's been for a long time in policy and practice of the commission not to penalize owners who either maintain their landmark buildings in sound first-class condition, or undertaking restoration work before coming before you for a special permit. And in this case, not only did they get the restoration work before this project came forward, but once they said they wanted to do a special permit, the landmark staff went back and instructed them to do additional restoration work.
And to redesign features that we had already approved. Okay.
You would like to respond to comments? I think some of your discussion has addressed some of them, but more would first like to discuss the modifications, the as-of-right and the bulk waiver.
I think, as I said earlier, it's true, with the exception of the fact that the as-of-right without the air rights transfer could still rise to 85 feet, which would be a taller building to be built. Oh, a taller street wall, the one proposing that that is better.
My question, if that's the case, how, how, what's the transfer? How many air rights are being transferred?
Eight thousand.
Three hundred.
Three hundred forty-one. Sixty-five people.
So you're really need them. That's a question that doesn't seem to be necessary.
What's the.
The building certainly could.
I mean, the building, there is an as-of-right office building of approximately the same type, or you could even do a taller building where the residential building and have smaller floor plates. That could be as-of-right without coming from anyone. But then the landmark would not get to transfer any of its development rights. It would not be subject to the additional restoration. And I think probably most importantly, because we're really looking long-term, it's not subject to a continuing maintenance agreement. And the estate of that house, you know, until two years ago, is a testament that, you know, over time, things can really, how's the individual landmarks, no matter how important, can deteriorate. And the restrictive declaration and the commission's enforcement of those policies will really ensure that that never happens again. But we think it's a very important preservation.
Okay, then just, what's the square footage of the as-of-right without the addition of the air rights?
Forty-one thousand, approximately. Forty-one thousand.
Thank you.
I would also note that, just, you know, as you said, by definition, when you're transferring development rights, the new building is somewhat larger as a result of the transfer. And that always happens in 7479s. It frequently happens in 74711s, which are really used to accomplish the same thing when they're on the same zoning.
And so the commission in this instance sort of looked at the base height and its relationship to the landmark.
And it also just say the commission is issuing the report to the City Planning Commission. They're not approving the transfer. They're not approving the special permit findings. That's what the City Planning Commission will review in this case.
Right. And can you also just speak to the 5% and how that.
The 5% is the standard requirement that the commission has always imposed for 7479s. That is money sort of over and above the cost of creating the building to the sound first-class condition, and that's put in a dedicated account to help cover maintenance. However, even if that money runs out, the obligation is still there. It can be a full circle.
So in other words, the restrictive declaration binds the property owner, regardless of who it is, in perpetuity to maintain it in first-class condition. Even if that fund runs out, yeah. Kim?
I have a question for the council. Usually, if this were just in a historic district, and they wanted to do a new building, and they had the air rights transfer from another building, not a landmark site, it, we would take into account what landmarks were occasioned to it, in that you wouldn't have a new building that's making other buildings in the landmark district look worse. That standard doesn't apply to this.
Yeah, the new building is not on a landmark site. It's not in a historic district. It just would be at the individual landmark in a way to the building.
Okay, but I'm saying, this building, this case, is directly across from Cooper Square, and across from what I think is an individual landmark too.
Yes.
And so we can't discuss how that is impacting that. Was this the.
No, it's just the bridge between the Hamilton House and the waivers being sought by the applicant, and very likely how the base of the building is done.
So if you're the owner of the Hamilton Holly House, you could just respond to a couple of the comments that made during the questioning.
Just to be clear, my name is Schlaumel. Steve, I'm the architect for the owner.
Sorry about that.
But actually, two things that I'd like to say, two important things that I'd like to say. Frank Perez and I have worked very hard on this building. We're looking forward to this building being restored fully for our children and for the neighborhood, and for everyone to feel a wonderful brother. Our client, who wants this property, wants this property as attested to other buildings in St. Mark's that sit there undeveloped and unrested. Our client wants this. Part of the idea of buying property was that you can afford to restore, and that's an important element. So we look at 20 St. Marks, we look at 86 St. Marks, they've been there for years. And so I think that had our client known that this potentially is not worthwhile, he may not have proceeded with this. And at this point, as John said, you know, we completed the building, and if this transfer would not occur, and I can't speak for Rick exactly, he may not continue to do that further if we can get our TCOs and CROs as is, but certainly we've worked hard all the time on this. But it's just something to think about, you know? We have an opportunity to restore an old building, and financially, it would work satisfying.
Thank you.
I thought I knew, but now I'm confused. Always talk about the base of the building. But if we were to go forward with what they suggested, we would, we would protect the entirety of the building, is that right?
The building is not under our jurisdiction, so we have to find, because they're seeking the bulk waiver, we have to find that that waiver has a harmonious relationship. So we have, sometimes we extended that to materials, but it's not a design review.
So is that different than the two, I don't know, seven, two buildings on 50 Cent, or that we've been at through the miles high? But those are on landmark sites.
All right. Any other questions?
So we do nothing. Neighborhood gets, because they get that building on the left. Design is designed with any materials that the developer wants.
With any architect.
Any architect, any way.
One of the terrible forces today.
They can look any way they want it to look, all right? And they can stop the first-class restoration that they've started on the landmark, all right? And then we just have the usual routine process of them coming to us for further applications, and no guarantee of the first-class restoration.
That's correct.
That's what we get.
Well, they wouldn't come to us at all, if they don't, if they're not in labor.
Right, I don't know. Possibly, what happens if we do nothing? If we say no?
We may never see them again. I mean, anyway, that's.
Any other questions? With the team.
In this case, you know, this media law, otherwise, you know, because materially you allow the transfer to be a sort of obstruction of, you know, that view a little bit, that maybe do not affect any of the character. But if you look at that view that the testimony was talking about, looking west from St. Mark's. Looking west.
You're saying they're on St. Mark's, looking towards Cooper.
Right, I mean, that, the, the.
But I believe that that as-of-right scenario has a taller base.
It's worse.
Block more.
So if we transfer the development rights, but did not ask for any waivers, the base height would be taller.
No, even without.
Regardless.
So this point here, which is at 63, would rise to 85.
Yeah.
This portion here would be set back 15 feet, but you still would have an 85-foot street wall in front of the landmark.
With no transfer at all.
With no transfer at all.
And there was a comment, public testimony, about the relationship with that base height to the rest of the block. 63 feet, the rest of the block varies to 55 and 59.
Yeah.
So that actually does bring that street wall with what you see right here, much more in line with the rest of the block.
Why couldn't you set back on this side of the normal convention, given this overall height, and set back further back, so that it would not be obstructed?
It was just a balance between trying to create better floor plates on the upper floors as well, to set back if you need it very little. And you would get a tall building.
Other questions? Okay, so.
I just wanted to talk about restoration, because there was some comments made about the scope of restoration. The windows, dormers, and stoop are all going to be redone. The stoop has not been done yet, contrary to what the representation said. The windows will be reconstructed to have a much better profile, be much more insistent on the historic appearance. The dormers were constructed with landmark's windows and details that do not exactly match some of the historic presence, so we went back to past drawings for other buildings of this period. We went back to some of the forensic photos we had when we were taking the stucco off of these dormers, and had modified the proposal so that this is an exact replica of the historic dormers that were up there. And at the front door, this photo here, which I think dates to 1913, and is a drawing of the Penmar Cooper Building next door, as well as other photos that we have, show that there were ionic engaged columns in this give surround, and that's what we are restoring here. You see that in this photo, it's more, it's probably closer to a Greek revival style with black lasters and side lights, and we are modifying that to have the full federal period high-style engaged column. So there is a lot of work that is being added as a result of the special program application. And I also want to echo what John Weiss said. The idea that owners who maintain their buildings well, or who restore their buildings, aren't able to avail themselves of the transfer of development rights on an individual landmark is really bad policy. It encourages people not to maintain their buildings unless the landmark's preservation commission should do.
Other questions? Can you find one? Okay. So we will have a motion to close the hearing?
Second.
All in favor? Okay, so I think, you know, we have had a lot of discussion about our jurisdiction here, and so I think I don't have much more to add before I start the conversation. So Michael, you want to start?
Yeah. I'm, I think it's very important that we think carefully about the relationship between the findings for 7479 in this case and, and the overarching intent of the law, I guess we might see it, and the project in front of us. And it's true, like John said, that this may result, you know, if we were to say no to this, it may result in something that would be worse. But I think that we have to abide by these rules, and these rules have great value. It's very, very important that we support the notion of air rights transfer. It's the, it's the principal carrot in the arsenal of the commission. And even if in this particular location, it's, it may be less necessary because the document values have gone so high, there are many places in New York City where this kind of tool is incredibly valuable. And, and, you know, until we figure out a way to make it more equitably distributed, which is certainly be a great thing to do, we have to work with what we've got. So I think that the notion of the air rights transfer per se, and again, the 7479 process are good things, and we should support them. However, I think that the essence of the requirements, I understand, is that what the developer is doing is trading our floor area for a better historic preservation result. And that better preservation result occurs on two levels. One, the landmark itself gets improved to a higher degree. And two, the zoning modification itself results in a better historic environment for the designated landmark. In the case of the restoration, I think that, I agree with, with, John said, with earlier policy that if you don't penalize people for having gone out and done it proactively, and it's not really a quid pro quo, you don't really weigh the degree of restoration to the degree of the waiver. That's not the way the rules are written, and it does seem to be logical or fair necessarily. However, I think that there, that it was mentioned in some of the testimony and stuff, we've seen that there may be more detail, more care, additional, additional details that could be added to the restoration to make it a better one. I would, I would say they should work with staff to do so by making sure that they have before them all the relevant research material, and that they do their best to make it as accurate and detailed a restoration as it can be. The second piece is the zoning, the zoning piece, right? So basically, the argument is that if you give us the waiver, we'll drop the base height. And the base height will therefore be more contextual, so when you're viewing the property in its context, the base height will harmonize better with the, the building restored. Now, the, as I understand it, the argument isn't that it's better than what it could be under straight zoning, but that is just, it's just, it makes it better for the landmark, period. It's not a better than what it would otherwise be. So I think that.
I actually think that better is the better term.
Right, the word is the American, just passing the. That's a harmonious, that's a harmonious, right. So I think that the extent that this is a waiver of zoning in order to make a harmonious relation with a landmark across the street, the base height is almost good. It's a little bit too high, but it almost works. If, as the applicant says, the base height for the rest of the block is, is under 60 feet, here the base height is 60 feet, then it really should go to the base height, you know? It should just align set first. And second, the other piece of it is that what you're getting for that dropped base height is a fatter mid-zone, right? The mid-zone projects out more. And as the renderings showed, I don't believe that that particular. that particular result, uh, is harmonious with the landmark. I mean, what you have now is a gateway configuration, we have two old buildings flanking either side of the block as you, as you go down it. Um, that gateway creates a certain environment for the landmark, and that, but the block itself, and as uniformly, creates an environment for the landmark. On the fatter base, which would definitely be visible from many places along that block, and certainly front landmark, I don't think that it makes it a, I don't think that that makes for a harmonious relationship. For me, what I would say is that, that a harmonious relationship between a vertical element and the landmark can be one that's considerably more setback. Um, I personally don't think that the height is as much an issue here as is the setback. You've got a very tall building, there's plenty of very tall buildings in this arc around Cooper Square. I don't think that a higher building per se is inappropriate, but I certainly think one that approaches that arc into the street scale would be, uh, would fail to create the harmonious relationship that's required, that we find.
Okay, yeah.
I want to thank Michael for his humble remark, the, um, advantages of air rights transfers. I have a proponent for that for, almost since I came to New York, um, probably was the receiver site in New York again. Um, you've taken exactly, I think, my position. Um, I, I don't, uh, first of all, I think this commission will do everything that it needs to do over years and years and years to protect, uh, this extraordinary eighteen-thirty-one house that had such important people within it. A little bit better, a little bit more, right now, I have to weigh those new columns, I have to weigh, are those new columns, and a little bit more restoration really worth? What I can do is a very minor, uh, modification of the bulk. Uh, I've looked at those pictures, the one that Rollington suggested we look at, and I don't see the relationship at all between eighteen-thirty-one and a grander building on the north side of the street. If it's, if it's down a story or two, does that really relate? Does that, does that, does that mean anything to anybody? I don't think it would. So therefore, weighing these things, I come out to the same place, it's just not worth, it's worth it. I think it might be a better building, it might be a sufficient building, a less marketable building for office plates, I grant, but that's not our problem. Um, I think it might be a better building with eight thousand feet less, and with a slightly higher street wall, but with a pushback, uh, upper level. So I'm weighing these things, and I think that's what we have to do, we have to weigh the, the, um, the preservation elements versus what we get back. I was, I was about to be persuaded across a very fine line here, I think this is a fine line maybe to talk about, when I thought we had design control over the whole building, but now that I say we don't, we just provide, yes, a waiver is, uh, plus determined is, uh, harmonious, uh, and I can't, I can't sign it, so, um, I want to...
Okay, so, um, first, I think that, um...
I just want to be clear, so you can't find that any of the bulk waivers are harmonious, and one of the base height lower or higher doesn't make a difference, so I think...
I would say something slightly different, I would say that I'll take the base lower, but only if the bulk is pushed back, and I was willing to let the building go higher in order to get that, such that it was compatible with its neighbors along Cooper Square.
Well, maybe you just... Okay, so, yeah, I feel that, you know, there's going to be, potentially, there's going to be a very large building at this site, no matter what, you know, as far as dictating that possibility, so it's not, we're not here to decide whether there's going to be a large building at this site based on our decision. And, um, I really think we should support the air right, that I would support the air rights transfer because, um, it's a way of preserving the historic building, which is extremely important, letting air rights be used, which is an important way in many instances to preserve historic buildings, and because it's not going to make a large difference to, it, it's going to be a large building at this site, it's not like we're going to have a little smaller column, it's not going to happen. So the next issue is, is, you know, whether, um, to find, if we can find that it's compatible and harmonious with the existing site, and, you know, the materials and so forth at the moment are, are reasonable, I mean, they're, they're, they're more compatible than many would be. Uh, I think that the important issue for me, just as for Michael, is that, is the amount of setback is, I don't think you would perceive that this is a building of a similar, um, size at street level, so to speak, you still would perceive it as larger. Um, but without more setback, it's just not going to appear, I think, as having any potential to seem, to seem part of the street scale. Um, I don't know if fifty feet in height, you know, in the first form make much difference, but I think the setback does, and, uh, so that's my view as well on the issue.
Kim?
First, I must admit, I did go to Cooper Union for a while in high school, all through high school, which, besides that, um, I think I'm actually going to vote in favor, seriously, now, in that, yes, it's better for us to get the maintenance plan, and they said they don't miss already, and although I think, I would prefer that the building can respond to the National Landmark across the street from it, Cooper Union, and that building, I have something to say about that, that isn't in our purview, so, yes, and I'll be in favor of the modification for the, um, the street wall, yeah, I have a setback, because I think the law will, will at least respond to the other building theoretically, but, okay.
This is where... And?
I agree, I agree that the street wall is a really powerful tool that we have to help preserve the digital buildings. Um, I feel that the street wall is something that you want to perceive, and I believe that it should be kept very well, very high. Um, I would actually keep, keep it in, in the trade-off, but, and...
Um...
So, as everyone said, uh, air rights transfer is, is important, um, but I just think that our being asked to weigh in on these, you know, slivers of bulk, as though that was going to determine harmony or not, it's just possible.
Yeah.
But I just, I still, I, I don't know what to do.
John?
Okay, I, I, I have so much trouble, it's pretty figuring out who I agree with and who I don't. Uh, I think I agree with Michael, um, and, and how I get there, uh, could be similar, which is to say, you know, if the building had ever been landmarked, you know, we get, they would get eight thousand less square feet, and, and we have the building in the nineteen, the, uh, Hamilton Holly House from the nineteen-eighties tax law, nobody wants that. Uh, it being landmarked, we get the, uh, the building, and it results with the March two thousand seventeen certificate appropriateness, which is a much better building, um, and they don't get there eight thousand fifty. Um, and if we, um, approve something, not just necessarily today, but eventually, um, if we sign off, um, we get a high-end, uh, Hamilton Holly House, and we get a maintenance plan, um, and some, um, control over the, you know, whether the building, the new building is on or is not. Um, and I think that's where, uh, I think that's where we need to be, uh, which is to say, um, we need to create a better, um, historic environment for the landmark, prove what we do with, uh, this project. I can't say that I agree with Kim, that I'm okay with it as it is. Um, I think the base height does need to be more contextual, uh, as Michael says. Uh, the height is not as much of an issue for me, I think that actually some of the testimonies sort of convinced me the opposite way when I was going to go, which said, yeah, it is on third avenue, and there's a lot of tall buildings there, so that's not going to lose harmony. Um, but, um, I do think that this, on the flip side of this, there's going to be a huge amount of pressure on our staff to be uber-demanding about, um, about what a high-end restoration really is, um, because we're going to get a whole tech-a-lot for that in this deal. So, um, I, I, I think, if it was up to me, I would say, I think they need to, um, they need to play with this and, and, and come back with something that is a little bit more, um, in harmonious. But I see, I see, I can see a result coming out of it.
I think, um, you mentioned a few examples that were in the comments on this relationship. I keep thinking about, you know, the contention in one line, you know, St. Thomas, that's a district, but, uh, we're, some examples for people of...
Well, actually, no, it's, it's not a historic district, but that building actually wasn't visually connected to the landmark, so we did a slight review, but, um, we can maybe, you know, come back to some of our examples, but I think one that comes to my mind is the Tinkley Building, and that, and the building was across the street, and we felt it was largely downstairs. It was a very, very tall building across from the Tinkley Building, I was thinking about...
Yeah.
How we've looked at harmony before, in general.
Okay. Jamie?
So, you know, developers building, an office building, the downtown office market is an important growing market in the city right now. Right around the square, just south, one of the buildings that were going to be landmarked and is going to be, is an office building. It behooves the developer to, we're just discussing this from a privileged perspective, to, in this market, with the goal of getting, you know, the best rents you can and the best tenants you can, in, in terms of...
Targeting.
Targeting, and yourself, you know, this area is growing as a tech market with other, you know, related uses. You want to develop the best building you possibly can. So to me, it's just my interpretation, seventy-four, seventy-nine is all about doing that, right? Because they get to shape it a little more, then they hire an architect, I don't believe they would trade off for a bad architect, you know? They, they need, they want to develop a good-looking building because they want to attract good tenants. So to the extent that we, as a result of this process, have the opportunity to ask them to do other things to enhance that building within its context, I think, fine, although I, I am of the school also, I do believe that it's not going to harmonize them much more than it is because of the kind of building it is. Um, and in fact, that even though we're not commenting, or, you know, we're not commenting on this, I'm going to accept the record, you know, out of glance, this is a well-designed building. So for me, even though, uh, on some level, I'm having a problem with the whole thing, on another level, this important landmark is going to be restored, and it is important for us, so I'm not in favor of that, in favor of the, of, um, the best restoration possible, um, and, you know, a maintenance plan that actually can ensure that it is restored, and in a neighborhood where there is a lot of development going up, um, hot toll development, it's, uh, I'm relieved that this building will not, will be a good addition to the landscape, with whatever other additions we as a commission ask for.
I have one thing, just to concur, in addition to defining what appropriate means every Tuesday or at this table, the most subjective term imaginable, we now have to define a piece of this harmony.
Yeah. Rollington?
Um, no, just, uh, I'm extremely torn, um, this is, uh, so, this, uh, this, uh, as Michael, uh, and the fact that, uh, you have a natural pressure, that's obviously very, very important to preserve. On the other hand, you know, it's how you view this corner, this corner could be viewed from third avenue, it could be viewed from St. Marks, and so I do agree with John and Mark that if you're going to approve it, then it should be setback along, at least in context on a low scale, uh, on St. Marks, uh, because that is a very visible corner, and it's extremely, what I call pitiful, where you will just turn the tractor of the neighborhood, so I, I, I'm sort of torn on, on this thing, but I, I tend to agree with John and, and Michael that, you know, it's, it's too important to, uh, to do that, but then I'm, I'm not happy with a tall glass building on that corner, is all we say.
To the extent that we can talk about the base, which I personally find it totally arbitrary thing, but, um, in this context, I would just say that the base should be more in line with its context, which is a punched kind of articulation, a punched wall, a more, more solid wall. This is very much a framed wall type, style building, even though it's rented in brick, we do not know the material, I think, I would identify the base as being a cast iron or faux-cast iron kind of look, uh, so I would just ask that they, portions of the, of the base.
Okay, alright, so I think that, um, generally speaking, you know, we've had to parse through our very specific jurisdiction here, which is not about appropriateness, so it's, it's, um, we've had a good discussion about that, and I think at the end of the day, we have support for our proposal to transfer the development rights under due simple, if they appear, but I think that for the people who generally supported, um, the, I think that there could be some refinement of the bulk waivers to have enhanced that relationship and, um, be truly harmonious, and I think most people feel that the lower base height is important to relate to the landmark, and that the, then the, the little piece where you're getting a little bit wider, I think you maybe think about that and what the right configuration there is. I mean, for me, once you have your base, I think when you're on the street, that's really what you're going to be receiving, pre-receiving, so I don't feel as much of the need to set back further, but I think many people do, so that's an area to think about. Um, and I do think, while not specifically under jurisdiction, we might be also have the opportunity to think about how the bases are prepared, and to think about, sort of, if there's anything additional you can do for that relationship, um, with the, with the individual landmark. And, you know, finally, I just want to add with, just making a statement about how important this tool is, it is, um, you know, not only a very important tool that we use when we're trying to designate properties, but it is really an equity issue, it's designed to provide relief to landmark owners, and it really ensures, you know, a first-class restoration, which is something that we can't ever get under appropriateness. People come to us and make changes, and we can find those changes incorporated, doesn't necessarily mean it has to be the most perfect and pure restoration. And so that restoration, a first-class restoration, is something that, that the benefits, the landmark benefits from, the public benefits from, and in addition, again, the fact that this lines all future owners, whoever they may be, in perpetuity to maintain it in that first-class condition, so it's, it's a very important tool, and I think that, um, in this case, the bulk waivers are fairly modest, and I think we'll find a way to get it, but it's worth your revisiting it a little bit more and refining that configuration. Okay, so we'll see you soon. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.